I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 1st, 2022, County Corredum and Madera Town Council Meeting. It's kind of hard to believe, but we're already one month gone. 2022. And with that Rebecca, can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Mongan.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
President.
America Sisa.
Here. And with that, if we can, I want to say stand, but if we can salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open up our meeting for public comment. This gives anybody from the public an opportunity to speak on any subject or any matter that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and we'll get you moved over. And I see one hand raised so far Rebecca. We have two.
I am just getting our timer moved over.
Looks like we have Sarah and then Jake.
Okay, I will unmute Sarah now.
Hi, thank you. So this is Sarah V. Hill and I noticed it's like the master plan may not be on the agenda for this evening, but I just wanted to reiterate a big thank you to all the hard work that's gone into that master plan and the community outreach. And I do work on the field with three, three different groups that use the field from, you know, the little 18-month-old kids to the huge soccer program through Parks and Rec, Corredum and Madera FC. And I just want to reiterate that we were, you know, number of us are, very large number of us are in support of turf fields to some, to some level at one or two of the parks and whatever we can do when the time comes to be in support of helping kind of continue the progress on that would, would be great. And we're, we're here. And just again, a big thank you for that. And I just, I knew the master plan was not on agenda for this evening, but wanted to reiterate that.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. And if you can bring Jake over when you have a moment.
Okay, I am unmuting Jake now.
Hey, good evening, Town Council. Just to bring up the point of the master plan committee on the, you know, the field. I want to voice my concerns over the use of the field turf because it seems to be that there's a contention of growing individuals and groups that are in favor of this, but I don't think it's been very well thought out to kind of consider the consequences of such fields. I think you can really easily go on any website, including National Institutes of Health, United States government websites, state government websites that state that there's 92 different types of chemical elements used and the crumb rubber that's used in building these fields. And 12 of those chemicals are known to be cancer-causing. It's also showing that the rubber breaks down and runs off into the surrounding environment. There's been multiple scientific research stating that the environmental impact of high levels of zinc in the surrounding water tables of artificial turf fields. And furthermore, you know, fields reach up to 150 degrees versus normal turf's 98 degrees. The only way to get in a heat of the day to cool that field down is to, is to apply water to that field. And I think, you know, I think something that's super important to understand here too is, you know, it's not only just the environmental impact of a field. And I can understand everybody wants nice turf fields and they think it's great because it's the low consumption of water. But the reality is if you don't water them, they don't use biocide, well, guess what happens to the field? Staff immersive start to build up on the field because animals, you know, use the field as well. And that biocide breaks down and gets into the water system as well. And so I just think that while we're, you know, it always seems to be a contingent in favor of such artificial fields. I think there's serious environmental concerns, but I don't think that we're evaluating correctly. And not to mention the breakdown of the rubber, which has been clearly causes aerosol, the occasion of the rubber compounds in the air and also ended runoff of local sewer storm water drains. I'm not stating anything that's, that is some cryptic website. You can go on washingtonpost.com, you can go on Guardian, you can go on a National Institutes of Health and other government environmental impact websites and see the big challenges that why most cities are now rotating away from artificial turf fields and moving more towards, you know, of low, you know, low water use fields on a go-forward basis. So it's want to make sure that's, there is a contingency of us on, in Madera Gardens and the surrounding community that are very concerned about the installation of such fields.
All right. Thank you Jake for your comments. Appreciate it. Next we have Pat Ravazio.
Okay, Pat has been unmuted.
Hi, hi. I just wanted to say, first of all, I was going to say that it still said that Eli Beckman was mayor, but then it just got changed. So somebody's doing magic wizardry behind our, our picture tonight. But what I wanted to say about the sports fields to just let everyone know that we're a long way from making any decisions. I sat in on several of the sessions and I know the overall arcing plan and no hasty decisions are going to be made. I'd love to see us explore what would it would take to do natural fields for the kids and really have something above and beyond everyone else, but maybe that's too expensive. I don't know. But everyone should just relax on that issue and know that Parks and Rec is going to really take its time and do it right and listen to everybody and we'll make the right decision and in the right place. And that's all for tonight. Well, at least for right now.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
And I don't see any other hands raised. Rebecca, did we get any comments via email?
Thank you, America Sisa. Yes, we did receive one email public comments. Let me just refresh both my town and the public comment email since I missed some last week that went to my town email and I don't want to repeat that this week. Um. Okay. I'm going to start the timer and then I'll read the one that we did receive that was forwarded to the council and uploaded to the website and available for the public to view as well. It is from Joel de Vilvis, who says, "To the members of the Corredum and Madera Town Council, I am writing to express my concern over the Park and Rec Master Plan process at considerable expense to the taxpayers in Corredum and Madera. Park and Rec hired a consulting firm to run a park and recreation survey in August of 2021. In that survey, there were 685 respondents. They, the survey claims to have a high degree of accuracy stating, quote, "A precision of at least plus or minus 3.6% at the 95% level of confidence," end quote. The survey results ranked top priorities for investments, which showed all-weather artificial turf fields as number 18 out of 36 categories. It also showed soccer fields as number 25 out of the 36. Additionally, only 16.7% of households said their needs were not being met in regards to all-weather artificial turf. That is number 20 out of the list of 36. Subsequent to the survey results being published, Park and Rec hosted two Zoom calls to collect additional feedback on the master plan. I attended the first of these two Zoom calls, which had between 35 to 40 attendees. The majority of attendees identified themselves as coaches or parents of Corredum and Madera Football Club, CMFC. No agenda was published ahead of these meetings. A few of the survey topics were discussed, including town park bathrooms, rec center upgrades and artificial turf fields. I was surprised artificial turf was being discussed as a top priority because it was ranked so far down the list in survey results. At the end of the Zoom call, a poll was taken that showed that 84% of the people on the call supported artificial turf fields, which was no surprise given that CMFC had actively recruited their membership to attend the call. The poll results from these Zoom calls should not be used to justify artificial turf fields as a priority. The survey results, which collected input from a much larger and diverse population, should set the investment priority. I ask that there be appropriate oversight of this process, which appears to be favoring the input of an organized minority over the broader and more accurate survey results. Regards, Joel de Vilvis. I'm not seeing any additional raised hands, but I'm just refreshing the public comment email one more time.
Right.
And no email public comments were received.
Okay, so with that, that's no more hands are raised and there's no more email comments. I'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll move to presentations. Tonight we have one presentation. It's from Ashley Howell, who's the Director of Park Recreation. And that's going to be on annual, she's going to give us her annual program report. As noted before, it's not on the master plan. We like to have Ashley or Park and Rec come at least once a year to the town council, both to educate and inform us about the activities at the Park and Recreation Department. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you. Sorry, just pulling up the PowerPoint presentation.
No problem. Can you also introduce, because I think he's on here, is Tim from your team?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Absolutely. First, my name is Ashley Howell. I'm your Parks and Recreation Director. And to introduce Tim Berry, he is our Parks, he's our Recreation Program Manager, and he's one of our accomplishments in 2021. So we'll, we'll go forward and recognize him for that later. But Tim, if you could wave to everybody while I pull up this presentation. All right. Sorry, a little delay there.
If it does give you difficulty, I do have the PDF that you sent me earlier that I can call if needed.
Ashley is your office assistant with you tonight?
Yes, I have one office assistant with me. Luckily Grandma is taking care of him because he's quite loud these days. The small office assistant that likes to interrupt is not here. She's at home. Okay. Rebecca, would you mind pulling it up? I've got it connected to the P drive and all that fun stuff. Sorry about that, everybody. I was anticipating more public comment.
Yes, it, um. It should look fairly similar to PowerPoint. It's just a PDF. So. Are you seeing it?
I am seeing it.
Okay. Let me just make sure I can switch. Yes. Okay, you're good.
All right, sounds good. All right. Well, this is our Park Recreation Annual Program Report for 2021. Thank you, everybody, for Town Council for allowing me the opportunity to present this to you tonight. I enjoy going through the annual review, going through our Facebook posts, going through our messages through the town's email and reflecting on all that we've accomplished. This is merely a snapshot of things that we've accomplished and, and I hope that you enjoy some of the images and some of the recap. And I'll try to move slowly through some of the pictures because they are, they're really great. And it's great to celebrate and recognize my team for all their hard work. Okay. So the three areas of our goals and priorities for 2021 are focused on communication, programs and services, and planning. Next. So communication in the areas of social media. We continue to make professional and engaging posts via Facebook, Instagram, and Nextdoor. We introduced the department's YouTube channel in January of 2021, and we plan to continue development, developing content to generate awareness for classes and programs. Digital news, we continue to provide digital content for the town chronicles, school email newsletters, and to always provide a digital option for our department activity guide. You can see the three images of our activity guide there. We also introduced school menus for after-school classes offered at Neil Cummins and Cove campuses, and that's our magic down below. The website, we continue to make improvements to Park and Rec page layout function and regularly update the content to improve user experience and return visits hopefully. RecPro, which is our registration software, previously had some blank screens and some landing pages that didn't really connect our pages from our homepage to the registration software. And there wasn't a united front. So down in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see our updated page. So this is the homepage for our registration system. So if you go, you can go directly to it, or you can link from it from our page for online registration. And it has the similar header that we used to have for the town page. We've got navigation bars and we've got a scrolling image for our classes. So it's much more customizable and recognition for our programs. Relationships are very important to us. We wanted to continue to strengthen the relationships that we've made with the school district, community groups, the Corredum and Madera Library and Larkspur Recreation, for example. When possible, we try to engage those groups to partner, collaborate on events and programs. You can see the example of Neil Cummins Readathon, and we've helped support the Lions Club Crab Feed, any way that we can help our, our partner groups communicate opportunities to engage and have meaningful relationships within our community. We try to support that. And another example is for holiday readings with the library. And, and we also, thanks to the Lions, they helped us with the, the bar for our art receptions. Employment and engagement and training, employee engagement and training. We implemented new file storage tree for electronic file systems for employees' shared documents, which streamlined the collaboration and shared resources. And we also planned an annual review and audit for those files because we know that just like paper files, they get out of hand and they get unorganized. So if we can get those on our schedule to annually do, it'll save our, our server space and make us more efficient and make sure that we're not duplicating copies going out in versions. Continue to host irregular staff meetings via Zoom, encourage team to seek out education and training opportunities in general, and then specifically through the California Parks and Recreation Society, through their events, meetings, and calls, which provides staff with a network of professionals and resources. I wanted to encourage our team to reach out to our neighbors, not only within Marin County, but within the state and then nationally. There's a number of nationwide organizations and groups on Facebook that kind of connect ideas and get us thinking outside the box. So it's nice to know, especially during COVID, when we're kind of shut in or shut home or siloed in general, that we have this huge network of communication out there and support. Our industry is very unique, in my opinion, because we don't compete with each other, even if it's, you know, Larkspur, Mill Valley, like those are our friends and they're our colleagues and we're here to help each other and share opportunities and share what works and doesn't work for our communities. And then continued development of department organizational chart with roles and responsibilities, which is going to be a work in progress as we resume programming and services and build our team back up to full operation status. All right, next slide. Programs and services, beginning with classes, our focus is on quality and variety. We offered 153 classes in 2021, 31 for adults and 122 for youth. And I feel that it's important to note that these classes were all able to adhere to the fluid state and county guidelines during the pandemic. And staff did an amazing job staying in touch with neighboring agencies and guidance changes to ensure that our participants and our instructors were as safe as possible. And then Recreation Coordinator Erin expanded the number of classes offered at both Neil Cummins and Cove campuses for the fall semester, which introduced the new marketing menus, which you can see on the right-hand side for both school sites, that allowed parents to easily see the programming offered at their schools campuses. So hopefully it made it a lot easier for families. They can drop off their kids, have school, and then they have something really cool after school to do. So they've got a number of different classes that are offered right there on site. And then these are just a sample of some of the classes that we offered. We have such a good diverse offering. And then also a way to celebrate some of the marketing that Christina put together. So some little snippets with children's tap dance in class on top and carpentry. That's the format and the consistency that Christina developed. And I think it really helps our streamline our marketing communication. And through our relationships with the school district and Neil Cummins administrators, we were able to secure the exclusive use of F1 and F2 portable classrooms at Neil Cummins, which are adjacent to the two portables that we're using currently for the childcare program. Next slide. And programs, our priority is on safety, quality, and efficiency. So the three major programs that we have are a school year program, the summer camp, and then Corredum and Madera Children's Center. These are all operated in-house by staff employees. First of all, Falling Summer Camp 2020, the day camp program model transitioned to support the school year, spring 2020 school semester. And our staff continues to support modified school schedules and remote learning and provide supervision and activities after school on early dismissal days and during school breaks. And Summer Camp 2021 ran similarly, similarly to the previous summer with smaller groups, no field trips, and followed pandemic guidelines and restrictions. And the Corredum and Madera Children's Center opened on August 18th to provide recreational childcare at Neil Cummins Elementary School. And staff learned and customized a specialized registration module in our recreation software for childcare registration. At the end of 2021, there were 73 families enrolled in the program with an average of 18 children for kindergarten dismissal and 54 children at day after school, after school. And then current revenue for the program is 161,000, which exceeds the original revenue projected for the fiscal year for 2021, 2022 by 23,000. So we are able to do a mid-year budget adjustment. And I just wanted to pause with that. It's just a huge success. And I wanted to outline Alex and Alex are in the picture in the middle. And that's their Penny Carnival, which is one of their favorite camp events. And because they love doing the creative, colorful, fun, engaging activities that bring the smiles to all those kids in those pictures. And they have just done a phenomenal job. This is a new program. They have, you know, with the assistance of Rochelle, who was our interim director, while on maternity leave, they've just done an amazing job and they continue to impress. And the program continues to grow and elevate, and they're constantly doing something new and adding something different. And if you go and visit the portables, they're the cleanest, most organized places that I've ever seen. And, you know, it's just, it's just really wonderful to see them grow. Next slide. Programs and services continued with active older adults. So it was one of our, our favorite groups that we, we are really eager to have come back into the community center as soon as possible. We've started to be able to open the doors to have our, our puzzle and puzzle and book exchange, which you can see in the middle down there. We had overwhelming support from the community, tons of donations. In fact, way too many donations. We had to close that. We turned into a little mini library in front, which was really great because we did have people stop by on those, on the Thursday that when we started it. And then every day, once we started opening the lobby for visitors. And because of the huge success, we will always have one bookshelf that will have a revolving, you know, book exchange and puzzles. But we did have to, to ensure that donations and giveaways of the majority of the stocks so that we can make room for, for operating. And then on the right-hand side, you can see on the lower corner is our congregate meals. That's through the County of Marin and affiliated partners. Normally that would be inside, but we've, they've done a grab and go. So they set up in the back of the, the community center and participants, which is averages about 40 each week. And they have to take reservations. We're at capacity based on what the county will allow us. They can either drive up or walk up, but staff, staff changes going back there. Perry takes the lead on it and different people come in to support her. But it's really great to see all of our friends come up and visit. And then there is, up on the right-hand corner, we have, thanks to Cheryl Long Janati, we supported her and the return of her senior Christmas light tours, holiday light tours and her, and her, I think she calls it a pedicab, a Gertrude. And then over on the left-hand side is recognizing some of the classes. We have Carol Butler in our Tap Outside, which is a general class open to all adults, but typically we're getting some of our more traditional seniors in that group. And it's just really creative use of the space and operating outside when we weren't able to operate indoors. And on the bottom left-hand corner is Perry there doing calls and continuing calls sporadically. Now, most of the, most of our participants off the call lists that we've been calling since the beginning of COVID and in March of 2020 are visiting us during the congregate meals. So we're able to check in in person, which is a preferred method. And return to midday class, midday classes in 2021, we've got seniors in balance and chair yoga too. And next slide. All right. And our Adults with Developmental Disabilities, which is through our REC Inc. program and our Recreation Coordinator Erin, they continue to support monthly virtual dances and they resumed some indoor, some in-person classes and events. The virtual classes averaged 50 to 80 people. And on the right-hand side, you can see they had a special holiday meet, the Meet Santa, and they had breakout rooms set up. And my daughter and my son are on the bottom right-hand corner, and my daughters went to this private room with Santa. So it was open to everybody. Anybody's always welcome to come to these dances. It's super fun. They love visitors. You can have a number of different windows there. But the, the unique steps that Erin took to, to really make it special for all the visitors was really cool. And the one-on-one with Santa was, was really hard to tell Shelby that she couldn't have Santa visits every, every day, that he had to zoom with other people. So it's just really neat. In the middle is their, their holiday dinner at Celia's. On the right-hand side, bottom is they rented out movie theaters and they got to go and see each other in person, give elbow bumps, and they rented the whole theater. And Erin said, just seeing the look on people's faces when she walked in and they could actually see each other in person was just priceless. And on the bottom left-hand side, we've got some, some teen volunteers and they had a sport activity out at Town Park and in the, in the patio area of the community center. So just kind of recognizing this unique, this unique segment of our population that we just are thrilled to be able to serve in so many different ways, virtually continued, and then now in person in 2021. And we can't wait to have more in-person activities. So thank you, Erin, for all of your work with that group. Next slide. All right. Programs, our priority again is on safety, quality, and efficiency. Corredum and Madera FC, which is our soccer program, adult softball, and then our annual tennis and pickleball court sales. Compliments for our soccer crew. In 2021, there was an increase in youth participating in the program from spring clinics, new summer camps, teams registered in both recreation, soccer, and competitive leagues. And the revenue projection for the fiscal year was 287,000. And as of January, the program brought in over 563,000. Pause right there. All right. And adult softball, after canceling 2020 season, our priority was to get their players back on the field. And in order to make this happen, we partnered with our friends at their ranch, which is Tiburon Belvedere Recreation, because they had approved safety protocols and precautions in place from 2020 and the staff to ensure that the program was going to be a success. And Maureen was awesome. She got our players back out on our fields. And then she also had some games played out at McGinnis through the county. And it was really great to have our, our teams back on the field. So thank you for our partnership with the ranch for that. Annual tennis and pickleball court sales. We sold 337 keys in 2021, 270 of those for residents of Corredum and Madera. So a lot of times our top complaints, our feedback is that people want to get on the courts and they can't because there's non-residents on there and we shouldn't sell non-resident keys, which I completely understand. We want to have our, our residents utilizing their home courts. But we just wanted to make sure that the message is clear out there that the majority of key holders are residents. Only 67 of those 337 are non-residents. So we know there's demand and we're trying to do minimal programming and taking that space away. But I wanted to make that point. Next slide. All right. Events, activities, and art exhibitions. Events, we continue to offer small events that can be well-produced and safe and bring the community back to our facilities and parks as soon as possible. So a combination of an event and an activity is we've got the, in the center, we have our leprechaun. And that was the Great Leprechaun Hunt in Town Park, conceptualized and implemented by Recreation Coordinator Erin. And she did amazing research, even zoomed with somebody in Dublin and had a ton of history and little zones out in the park that brought families to come and learn more. She had QR codes that went to activities, to history lessons, to audio. They even did a little Irish jig. It was a lot of fun and it was just a unique idea. So we like the opportunity to introduce new things, check them out, and then offer something new the next year. Another activity, or I see another example, we had art exhibitions and we were super excited to introduce those. We had two exhibitions in 2021. On the top, we've got the California Watercolor Association, which was a virtual exhibition in March. And we yielded two commissions from two sales from that. And then on the bottom right-hand corner was our first in-person exhibition. It was our Director's Invitational of Mixed Media. And that was in December and we had an opening and closing reception. And we, and we had hours during the week to come and check it out. And you can see the image of the layout in the middle of the slide. We had at least 150 people come by and check it out. We had a great opening reception. The Lions had their bar and hopefully they had a great donation turnout for that. And then our closing included live music. And it was just really festive and it was nice to have people in the building during the holidays. On the left-hand side was an example of some of our social media activities. Since we couldn't do anything special for mothers in person, we did something similar to Father's Day. But we had like this wonderful brunch. And so hopefully we'll continue to be able to offer something like that in person in coming years. But it's just fun to do different things. And hopefully we're reaching different segments of our population by, by switching up our programming and offerings. Next slide. Okay, moving into our planning. Our emergency planning this year consisted of working with the county on shelter management and training and identification. So the County of Marin actually engaged a lot of the gauge, the local municipalities and schools to perform site assessments and identify purposes for select facilities, outline roles and responsibilities, and unify communication. And then the preparation is going to continue for 2022. But we were the first site to volunteer to have our, our, our site inspection. So they came out, we had members of the county from different public works perspectives, from generators to Red Cross, and where would we set up this and that. And it was really interesting to see their perspective and how they evaluate our facility. And moving forward, we'll be much more, much more prepared for, for future evacuations and how we work with our local agencies and, and neighbors to not only post different elements, whether it be a medical shelter, which would be more our, our size and, and amenities versus a sleeping shelter versus a command center. So it's really interesting to learn all that. And then, see. And then, see. Master plan, we had the needs assessment survey that was administered in early 2021. It was about May and June that went out to, in the mail to all residents and then by email to past participants of recreation programs. And the community engagement focus group workshops were hosted in November and December. And you can see by joining the conversation meetings, we hosted the public meetings in January. And I'll provide a summary and update of community engagement at the next mayor's forum on February 22nd at 5:30. If you want to join us there. And facilities, we take advantage of the downtime for repairs and improvements, like installation of the solar panels that you can see on the right hand corner there. Thanks to the coordination of Public Works. Agreements. We developed a new agreement to operate after school program and the former portable is used by Twin Cities Children's Center and you'll come into elementary school. And we established the first Twin Cities Little League Use Agreement for Fields, which outlined roles and responsibilities and hopefully cleared up some communication between the two groups and expectations. Policies and procedures. We evaluated to improve efficiencies and reduce potential liability for the town. We revamped the scholarship program, thanks to Tim. And continue to review all forms and policies and implement, implement a process for annual review. And more agreements and support. We also, it's important and emergency planning. We have the, the blood drives that we're working with the fire department, Reuben coordinated with us. And we actually had one tonight, which was sold out. I think they've all been sold out so far. By sold out, I mean, everybody's got those reservations to, to line up and donate blood, which is at an all-time low in need. So it's great to see the community come out and support that group. All right. And staffing. In fall of 2021, Perry was promoted from part-time recreation assistant to full-time recreation coordinator to supervise senior programming and facility rentals. And with the approval of Parks and Recreation Commission and Town Council, we added a position for recreation program manager. And Tim has jumped right in and seamlessly joined our team and is helping us streamline, among other things, programming childcare, summer camp and is revamping the scholarship program. And he's just a really great, he, he just, he's already joined our team, like he's always been here. He created these amazing team building activities during December. And which included a gingerbread contest, which paired us up blindly with each other. And then we had everybody, all the staff that attended the holiday lunch vote and I won. But it was anonymous. I swear I didn't bribe anybody. But it was really fun to see people work and network and what they came up with, different things. And next slide. So thank you to our Parks and Recreation Team. You continue to demonstrate versatility, resilience and positivity in the wake of constant change. I celebrate each of our successes and look forward to seeing what we will accomplish next. And what's next for Parks and Rec? We are always going to be a work in progress. Our goal is to continue to adapt and meet the evolving needs of our community. We plan, plan to continue to focus on the three main areas as we did in 2021, which is communication, programs and services and planning. And I look forward to sharing our next update and appreciate you allowing me the time to present to you this evening.
Thank you, Ashley. With that, I'll go ahead. Before we open up for public comment, does anybody from Town Council have any questions for Ashley? No? Okay. I just have one. What can we expect for the summer?
We have got so much fun stuff already planned among setback of writing all these staff reports. But I want to get out all of these other think fun things. We're going to have this huge calendar of opportunities for summer. We've heard from the community needs assessment conversations and survey and public meetings that the community wants to come out and do stuff. They want to see each other. They want to eat. They want to listen to music. So we have two movie nights already planned, one at Town Park in July, which will be seeing two, one at Cove within August, which will be in Kanto. And then working with Larkspur, they are going to have one on this September 9th. So we're going to do Friday, Friday fun in the parks. I'm working with, coordinating with AIM to do a market in the park and we want to organize some music concerts. Not only continue to support the ones at Minke Park on Sundays, but something down in, in Town Park as well. So stay tuned. We're going to have a printed activity guide out at the end of March. So you'll have all, everything there for you.
Thank you. And with that, if there's no other questions from Town Council members, I'll go ahead and open it up. I'm sorry, Lea. Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, Ashley. That was a great presentation. I don't think I've smiled that much during any of the other presentations we get. So that was, that was really heartwarming. I was curious, piggybacking on Fred's question. It sounds like we're kind of planning more outdoor activities. Like are we, I know it's, who knows what's going to happen in the future, but what are we? Are there things we can be doing to be thinking about indoor activities so that when we're ready to go, we don't have to have a lot of ramp up time to start planning them? Or just if you could share how you're thinking about that. And then I was really interested when you mentioned the tennis key breakdown for residents and non-residents. And I just wonder if, do we sort of collect that type of data on other programs as well? I'm just sort of curious if we know, you know, who's using our programs.
Sure. I think, let me, let me go from part, part, part by part. What's coming up? And so mostly outdoor activities I'm planning right now because those are safe to plan and market and put in a printed activity guide. Since we haven't been printing activity guides, this is important to us to give these deadlines out there. And as far as indoor activities, we have, you know, high demand for our mother-son and our daddy-daughter dances. And those are kind of be one of some of the first things that we want to bring back indoors. There's going to be minimal planning that probably goes into those. So when we know it's safe, we're going to be able to do it out. And the most of the planning is going to be around the marketing and communication. But hopefully we've already increased our, our efforts and connections with the community through the improved. I meant, forgot to mention that our, our department emails go out through MailChimp now rather than through a general email. So they're much more flashy, eye-catching and using a standardized template, thanks to Erin. So hopefully we're, we're already better connected to communicate those out, but those would be some of the first events we want to bring back indoors. But I'm still just so cautious to, to set things and have to cancel them. So that's why I'm focusing on the marketing for printed for outdoor activities, which are safer. And the stats, we do have stats on resident, non-resident participation because when you register through our system for classes and programs, we collect that information. So happy to answer any questions offline if you have any interest in specific types of programs in the breakdown.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. We'll turn it over to public comment and we have one hand raised right now, which is from Patty.
Do you, I'm meeting Patty.
Good evening. Actually, I, I wanted to check, did you say that there were 31 adult programs and 122 programs for children?
In 2020, that was what's offered during our, our safety protocol classes. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else? That was it, Patty?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any of the hands raised. Did we receive any emails Rebecca?
Thank you, Marquesi. So just refreshing the email one more time. No, we did not receive any emails, public comments on this presentation.
Okay, thanks. And with that, on behalf of Town Council, Ashley, I just want to thank you and your entire team. You guys are doing a really fantastic, great job. And that's across the board between programming for kids to adults to activities. I just think you guys are doing a great job and I like the way that you guys think outside the box and you're coming with new and creative ideas. I'm just looking forward to more great things down the future from Park and Recreation. But again, that's for you and your entire team that you mentioned during your presentation. All you, just really appreciate all your hard work. Thanks. And we will be hearing from you again in about five minutes or so on two more park and red items, business items. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. These are items that have been previously discussed and they do not require further discussion. They can be approved by a single vote. Any member of the Town Council, staff or public may request an item be pulled and discussed further. And with that, I will go ahead and open it up to anybody from Town Council, staff or the public, if you wish to have an item pulled from the consent calendar. I don't see any hands raised. Do we get any email Rebecca via TCMMmail.org?
Thank you, Marquesi. So no, we did not receive any emailed public comments on the consent calendar.
Thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to Town Council for a motion. Yep, Bob.
A move approval of four A through four D.
Thank you, Eli. Eli seconded. If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Marquesi Sosa.
Yes. And with that, we do not have any public hearings tonight. We're going to move to six A, which is our first business item. And this is possible adoption of resolution number three, 2022, formalizing a revised park and recreation fee schedule for year 2022 to 2023. And it's, Ashley, you're back up again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to jump in and set this conversation off. Just because it is a work plan item and I, you know, when we originally looked at the schedule, you know, one of the things within the work plan is equity. You know, equity is a big deal for us. We're starting to set the stage for that. In the next two weeks, we're going to have our first working group meeting with the equity team. That working group consists of Councilmember Monken, myself, Lorena Barrera, our admin analyst and Chris Ragland, our building official. And so we're going to set the stage with the schedule, come back to council, probably within the next 45 days of a recommendation of our really rolling out our town plan to start education amongst staff, all the council members, boards and commissions, because it's an important part. I say that because a lot of the fee schedules, we're going to time that for after the equity discussion. So we're, we're set up as a, as a town staff and as boards and commissions and council, council members to have that equity discussion related to fees. This fee schedule is coming to you a little bit early. There's a few reasons. One is that we haven't updated the speed schedule in some time and we're starting to really ramp up programming. The second piece is, I think our, our, our staff within the Park and Rec team does a really good job thinking about equity and helping those most in need, which I think you're going to hear tonight. I don't think we did our staff justice on some of the great work they do. And so I verbally, Ashley and the team will be prepared to discuss that with you tonight. So I, I wanted to just set that with you to know that the equity conversations coming. We do not have to approve the fee schedule tonight. If, if you have consternation over this what is before you, but I think once you hear the presentation from staff and ask and get those questions answered, I think you may be positioned and feel comfortable to approve it. Again, once we go through that training with equity, we will come back and look at this fee schedule and, and you know, be positioned to come back to you with any amendments as necessary. But some of the good work that we do do is there are low income grants for our, for those in need. And also vouchers for childcare through the county. One of the big, kind of big picture of how, big picture issues of how we approach Park and Rec. The Park and Rec budget is approximately, you know, 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. About $450,000 of that is subsidized through the town of Corto Madera regardless. The council decided to separate the two. And so we pay for certain staff, certain services, utilities and other things to run the community center. And then everything else, approximately 800,000 of this budget is for, is programming and staff to provide that program. Going into that program and when you think about that 800,000 I've directed and it's because, you know, I honestly, I didn't have Ashley when we originally started this philosophy. And so you're going to start to see that conversation change for the better. But how we've approached it going into this fiscal year was like, look, let's be cost recovery. We don't want to make money off our residents. We want to provide great programs. And, but we want it to be at that 800,000 cost recovery. I'm not asking for anymore, but let's try to get as close to that 800,000 as possible. Keep it in mind, each of those programs within the 800,000, there's a number of subsidies that take place. We subsidize approximately $50,000 for senior programming in the past. We subsidize those, again, the low income grants. We subsidize, you know, childcare. So we do a lot of those, but the, on any one program, the intent is to be 100% cost recovery. And then we have the subsidy discussion and those discussions are usually through staff. They go through the commission and historically back to the council. I really like what I'm seeing and hearing from Ashley and her team moving forward. You know, because that's going to change a little bit. I think it's going to, I, I think it's, it's in for the better. But I think it's to let the team really look at what we've done good, what we need to improve on and what do we want to be, so to speak, when we grow up? Kind of big picture, you know, we brought in Tim and Ashley that have really outside perspective of really how to do this. And I think the council members, as I have, it's like, how do we come up with a fee? Do we, you know, do we compare it to our cohorts? Is there some standard in the industry? What is the cost recovery number that's appropriate for a town our size? Is it 100%? Is it 80%? Is it 60%? I think we all have those questions. And I think the team is here to really talk about what they're trying to do moving forward. But the underlying message that I want you to think about when you hear those answers to your questions is the equity conversation of how thoughtful and, and what they're putting into it. And so when I heard that, I felt comfortable moving this forward now. It's a couple of years out of date. I'm comfortable with you reviewing it and I recommend that you do approve the fee schedule. But I definitely want to, I want you to hear from staff, you know, of, of what we're working towards. And with that, I'll stop and Ashley, I'll turn it over to you. We also have some partner rec commissioners that are on this call as well. But I just want to be really clear. If the council has a question of how did the equity discussion go amongst the commission? We did not put them in a position to have an equity discussion again, because we haven't had the training yet. And we didn't think it was fair to put the commission in that situation. But with that said, I think we do speak to a lot of equity issues within the speed schedule that, you know, again, we didn't highlight in the staff report and I apologize for that. Ashley, it's all yours.
Thank you for the lead and I appreciate you sharing the background and, and having a good perspective of how, how and when we wrote this and for what our intentions are. The recommended action, as Todd said, is to review and discuss the recommended revisions by the, of the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule and consider adopting the resolution. Formalizing the revised schedule for the fiscal year 2022, 23 that was recommended to you by the Parks and Recreation Commission after two reviews. They reviewed it at two separate meetings. And then there's a separate section that'll be reviewed through a policy, policy lens from our town attorney on the reader board use policies. So the background is Parks and Recreation Commission reuse the parks and recreation fee schedule annually in late winter with the intention of recommending the fee schedule for adoption by the town council in January and effective July 1st following year. The last Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule was to be adjusted, reviewed and approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission in February of 2019 meeting. And with the commission's recommendation was adopted by Town Council on March 5th. And that resolution is attached in the staff report. No changes were proposed or made to the fee schedule in 2020. And the town council last approved the amended schedule approving the 2019 fee schedule to reinstate the before and after school childcare program. And that resolution is also linked in the staff report. I provided the commission with a preliminary proposal for an updated fee schedule at their September 27th meeting. And then presented recommendations and requested discussion to gain further direction. And that presentation is linked as well. Following the feedback and direction provided by the commission, staff performed additional research, refined recommendations and provided a spreadsheet to best illustrate industry fees and the ranges and how we fell in, in line with those fees. And that's in attachment one. The commission reviewed and discussed components of the fee schedule at their special meeting on December 6th. And with minor modifications, made the recommendation for council to consider approving the fee schedule as presented tonight. Discussion, you may review and discuss all components of the current fee schedule and provide input and direction to staff regarding items that could potentially be increased, decreased, added or removed, or areas for which you would like to have additional information or comparative, comparative analysis performed. And then I've broken out a bunch of different sections. Thanks to Rebecca for helping me format all this. This staff report is definitely a collective work. Rebecca had us, had the layout because it's a lot of material to kind of go through. And since it hasn't been gone through by the commission in a number of years in detail, we really wanted to, to clean up the document in the process to, for annual review. And then Tim and Rochelle did a lot of legwork and, and market research for us. So if you have specific questions regarding that, we've got Tim on the call that helped answer those questions. And Tim can also speak towards the development.
Thanks.
Nobody touch anything. And I was saying, and, and Tim can answer questions regarding the redevelopment and evaluation of our scholarship program in general and relaunch this year. So beginning with the, the sections, what I found with the council is that to go through each section. And then when we have discussion or questions, if we can go by section by section, it's probably the easiest and most organized way to, to have conversation. First, indoor facilities. The recommendation was to replace the line item Corto Madera NRGs with Corto Madera nonprofits and, and apply a rate of $125 an hour, which is plus the proposed $25 an hour facility tenant fee. Corto Madera nonprofit rate would apply to any Corto Madera based nonprofit group requesting to rent the community center for a meeting, class or event. And to clarify nonprofit, generally that is a term used in our industry that would be qualified with just a 501(c)(3). Defining two rates for deposits based on the inclusion or exclusion of alcohol, deposit for $500 for events without, without alcohol. Defining two rates for deposits based on the inclusion or exclusion of alcohol, deposit for five hundred dollars for events with, without alcohol and a thousand for events with alcohol. This would replace the previous range listed, which was five hundred to two thousand that lacked definition of how the amounts were determined or applied. In addition of a facility attendant fee to be applied to all rentals in order to account for staff time to set up and break down equipment since secure the facility. The sign in was previously included on the fee schedule, but was removed at some undetermined number of years ago. For example, in one fee resolution from the early two thousands, there was a line item saying additional fees that included eighty-five dollar flat rate for a building attendant. Digital marquee, the commission has recommended the temporary removal of the line item for commercial use from the fee schedule. There's been some confusion in recent years regarding commercial use and therefore use policies are being reviewed by a town, town attorney and brought back to the commission at a subsequent meeting and council at a subsequent meeting for approval moving forward. Neil Cummins gym changed to from Marin residents to quarter Madeira Larkspur residents. And recommended that other Marin residents include the non-resident rate category. Staff research revealed that school district facility rates and schedules should be the same between Hall Middle School and Neil Cummins Elementary School, which are of comparable size. There is currently currently a discrepancy within the rates between Larkspur Recreation and Cormodera Parks and Recreation for District Facilities. We wanted to streamline that and make sure that we're, we're in line with our, with our partner. Lark's recreations rate for the use of hall gym is fifty dollars an hour for most user groups, which is ten dollars an hour less than four meter charges for CYO basketball and fifteen dollars an hour more than CYO volleyball is charged for Neil Cummins Gym. Through informal communication with staff at Larkspur, we learned that they're planning to propose a two percent cost of living increase for gym rates effective July first. And we also learned that they have an unpublished commercial rate, which will become published in their next fee schedule of a hundred dollar an hour for any private or nonprofit use, which is rarely used there. They told informed me. Proactively, we would like to align fees with Larkspur and charge residents and non-residents and excuse and nonprofits, fifty-two dollars an hour to add in to add a commercial rate of a hundred dollars an hour. Should our town council wish to set different fees or, or tiered pricing, staff would need direction to support to encourage city of Larkspur to consider aligning their rates with quarter Madeira. In that case, staff would recommend adding a local nonprofit category of thirty-five dollars an hour based on industry research. Since January of twenty twenty-one, corner of our parks and rec has been given the opportunity to manage facility use requests for non-school hours at Neil Cummins Elementary School. And as a result, the department has been asked to rent classroom space. So we're adding, we're requesting to add an additional line for school classrooms at seventeen dollars an hour, which was the most recent charge from the school district for participant use. Outdoor facilities, the section includes picnic sites, Minkey Park, athletic fields, tennis court keys and sand volleyball courts. There's separate fees per quarter meter residence and non-residence, as well as required deposits for some rentals. We request the and recommend the creation of a new line item, commercial use permit, which would allow businesses to operate classes or clinics or services in outdoor town facilities. And this practice was initiated during COVID to as a means of supporting businesses with outdoor space when they could not have permitted to operate indoors. And it's been a source, it's been a great successful partnership and it's also been a source of revenue for the town with no staff, with minimal staff time. And we suggest removing the line item daily tennis court keys based on the lack of request and inefficiency with that. Programs, we have the quarter material children's center that rate schedule was adopted by town council in July, no recommended changes at this time. Quarter of a deer age friendly integration center request to delete the line as the center is no longer operating at the community center and staff is working to integrate the popular programs into the curriculum that we offer by the department. Summer playground, we request to temporarily remove this program from the fee schedule and allow the department opportunity to rebuild our summer camp program and rebrand. This program was not offered in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one due to COVID nineteen and it was replaced by a temporary program that was able to fluctuate and adhere to state county guidance and restrictions. Permit fees, we have no suggested recommendations for any permit fees related to special events, filming or photography. Moving into section four, these are, these use fees charges excluding, excluding duty staff applicable to towns, parks and recreation facilities should not be applied to town sponsored programs. And we suggest replacing quarter Madeira Volunteer Fire Association with Central Rain Fire. To town homeowners associations, homeowner associations have not requested the use of the community center meetings in recent records. And so we recommend no longer having the community center available for homeowners association, but instead offering smaller facilities, for example, within town hall. And if the council wishes to continue to offer home associations at a discounted use of the corner of your community center, recommendation is to set a reasonable rate be proposed for that includes a facility attendant fees to offset staff cost to support access and use of the facility. Moving into town civic organizations, the fee waiver is contingent upon current building use agreements between the town and organization. And those organizations are listed there from A through J, staff is working to create individual building use agreements with the defined town civic organizations above. Staff notes that it's important to codify the use agreements with each community group and to ideally recoup the cost of services of facility attendance to set up tables and chairs for each group specifications, be available for assistance and troubleshooting during meetings and events, and take down and put away tables and chairs and secure the building. Staff is going to be working directly with each of those groups listed to draft unique agreements that will be brought to your attention for review and approval. So individually, individual groups, individual agreements. For Larkspur, corner of your school district, the town has a current JPA and joint use agreement in place and no changes are recommended at this time. Section five, regarding employees, currently town of, town of Port of Madeira, Centralman Police Authority and Centralman Fire Department. All are permitted to participate in quarter Madeira Summer Playground Program at no charge of their immediate family. And the use of parks and recreation programs and facilities are charged standard rate minus twenty-five percent. And the recommendation is to continue to offer this benefit to town staff as well as fire and police staff. And staff also notes that moving forward, additional fee topics that will be reviewed at future review sessions will be corner of your football club, which is soccer, tennis court rental fee, basketball court rental fee and advertising in the printed Parks and Recreation Activity Guide. Moving into fiscal impact, fiscal impact based on the draft of revised fee, fee resolution includes the opportunity to recoup some staff costs associated with supporting facility rentals through the proposed facility attendant fee, collecting consistent park use fees by adding commercial use permit for park areas and allowing businesses to conduct classes in outdoor town facilities. Fiscal impact related to changing the rates for the Neil Cummins Gym depends on use requests of the existing St. Patrick's CYO groups and other potential nonprofit groups. To note currently, the CYO volleyball program is charged thirty-five dollars an hour for the gym while the basketball program sixty dollars an hour. The total gym use for twenty twenty, twenty-one volleyball, for example, season was one hundred and fifty-four hours for a total of five thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And if the hours remain consistent, the organization would have to pay an additional two thousand three hundred and ten dollars for the proposed rate. But at the same time, the total estimate gym reuse for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two basketball season is two hundred and eighty-one and a half hours for a total of sixteen thousand nine hundred and five. If those hours remain consistent, the organization would save two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars with the proposed rate. No environmental impact and I have three options for you tonight to consider adopt the resolution number three, two thousand twenty-two, formalizing revised Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission, adopt resolution to an O three, twenty twenty-two with modifications or three provide staff with further direction.
Thanks, Ashley. Great report. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up to town council members for any questions. Yeah, Eli.
Thank you, Fred, and thank you, Ashley. I realize that this is a huge undertaking for you guys. It's lots to unpack there. I think first question, just about the deposits on, on facility rentals like the, the rec center, for example. I'm just curious, can you give us a sense of, like, I get the concept, obviously, of the deposit. Can you give me a sense of, has that been useful for the town? If we had residents come in and damage stuff? And, and like, you know, been like, few glad we have that deposit or is it generally kind of a formality that, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time ends up getting returned?
Um, I can't say specific for quarter Madeira because unfortunately, while I've been employed, we haven't had indoor events. Having started right at the, right at the start of the pandemic, I can speak to my experience at other locations, city of Santa Fe, city of Venetia. There's been many cases that we were very thankful to have the deposit. We have actually had to charge in addition for damage and, and damages and theft that have happened at different facilities. In Venetia, I was part of the, the fee change from a minimum of five hundred dollar deposit to a thousand dollar because we're having large events and a, in a building that was a capacity of seven hundred. That would be like, oh, you want me to mop at the end of the night? I only have a five hundred dollar deposit. It's worth the five hundred dollars for me to walk away right now. So it's really nice to be able to have that security. It adds a layer of respect, in my opinion. Especially when we have groups that are coming from outside the community to use the building, which a lot of rentals for indoor facilities will be outside, outside the area. And they just have a different level of ownership and respect for our buildings. And in best case scenario, we would love to be able to give a hundred percent of deposit back a hundred percent of the time. But it is nice to have a little safeguard.
Great, thank you. That is really helpful. A couple of other questions. The renting the community center does, I, I saw in your benchmark study, which was really helpful, by the way, thanks for doing that. I saw that, that some other cities will, will charge an additional fee for the kitchen. Does, is ours just kind of assumed to come with the kitchen? I know the kitchen, you like, can't lock it. So it's, it's like not physically separated from the rest of the structure?
Yeah, there's a lot of strategies from different agencies on whether they wanted to rent that separately. You wouldn't want to rent the kitchen and not be able to rent the, the rest of the community center. So it's, it's hard to piece it together. And so because there's no separate real separation, just beside a, but you had a sliding door, it's easier to include it. And so our, our costs are, are consistent with our, our neighboring agencies to have it all included.
Got it. Thank you. I think just two other questions. On the, the list of the, the civic organizations that we're exempting here, I think that's fantastic. Thanks for doing that. I, I think I would like a little more clarity, just I, I think we had a clause in there about like other not-for-profit organizations get, you know, get a discount or something like that. I just, I guess I wonder if we risk getting into potentially weird territory by sort of calling out favorite, you know, favorite organizations as opposed to others. And I definitely agree, like, you know, I, I think we were very clear at the strategic planning retreat that we don't want to be charging the organizations that built us the rec center, abusing the rec center. And I think that's fantastic. I think all the organizations that you listed specifically are absolutely worthy of, of, you know, that special status. But I'm just curious about like other organizations that might be already exist that like maybe we're not aware of, or that might be started in the future. And I want to make sure that there's, you know, an opportunity for, for folks to have their organizations treated, you know, sort of equally and not feel like they're, they're not like among the chosen club of, of particular organizations.
Yeah, great point. And I'm really eager to hear if council has more feedback on the direction that they'd like to have us narrow down or further define or how they would like us to review said proposals or applications to be, you know, considered for this list.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I think my last question for now, I was just curious. So it looks from the fee schedule like, like if I go to San Clemente Park and play a game of basketball there with my brother, or if like, you know, if, if two people go and like have a picnic, like eat their lunch, like say two town employees or something, go and have lunch at a picking table in town park, are they supposed to pay? You know, obviously not their twenty-five percent discount, but are they supposed to pay? Am I supposed to pay for playing basketball? The people that I see playing volleyball in the sand pit, are they supposed to be paying? Because I, I don't think that, tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that people are generally paying for like the picnic tables and stuff or like to, to play a pickup game of basketball. And I feel like that's kind of maybe not such a reasonable expectation for us to have that they would need to pay or that they would be, you know, going through that effort to like, you know, kill a little time in the park.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yes. So in general, industry wide for parks and recreation is that park spaces first come, first serve. For us specifically, our reservation system is set up, has been set up since twenty fifteen as May first through Labor Day. And that's when we take reservations for picnic areas. You can, if it's not rented, we're still encouraging anybody to stop by and, and utilize the spaces. Their community, we want people to come and hang out and enjoy the twenty-two acres, especially at town park and then also over at Co Park. But a lot of people want to be able to reserve the space, especially if they're going to have invitations and guests and RSVPs. So we have a lot of birthday parties, showers, memorials, retirement parties, weddings even that people need to be able to secure and count on a space and not have to get there at six o'clock in the morning and potentially bargain over a space. But yeah, the, the, the general understanding is please come drop in. If there's an open space, you know, please utilize and enjoy our outdoor spaces. I did get a little background. We've been renting, quarter Madeira has been renting picnic areas since the mid nineteen nineties. And they used to rent year round until twenty fifteen. And now it's seasonally because recognizing during the fall and the soccer seasons that a lot of those picnic areas are not going to be able to be reserved because we have a ton of people utilizing our park luckily for the fields. So really making sure that they're first come, first served bases on those things. Also, as far as being able to have some level of education, if people are reserving our facility, then they're getting our, our information, our rules and our, our guidelines. Because there are certain areas that have been designated as enough space for, say, renting a jumper or a bounce house. We also want to make sure that people know what equipment they can bring in or not. And they can tell us when they're going to have equipment in. Being able to accept a deposit on a, on a rental also helps staff be able to recoup any expenses of cleaning or additional staff setup. It also supports us being able to have staff onsite during, you know, picnic seasons or high weekends that they can kind of be a meet and greet and make sure that there's a general supervision out there that's helping people utilize the spaces that they've paid for.
Thank you. No, that was great. Thank you. And just to clarify, definitely understand the necessity of, of like a reservation system because we have to have, you know, order and not have like, you know, can, you know, conflicts between two different people that want to use the same thing at the same time. But I, I think maybe charging is a separate, you know, issue, but I'm going to, I'll save that for the discussion portion. So that's all my questions for now. Thanks.
Eli, does anybody else have any other questions? Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, this may be more for Todd. But I'm happy to see that the Lions Club and the Women's Improvement Club are back on the fee waiver list. And it took some doing to get them there. And I just want to know, as we know, the Lions Club built the rec center at no cost to the town and donated it. And I've always had an historic agreement there to use it. How do we memorialize this for future councils and future generations so that we don't go through this process again? Is there a way to do that? Because I know it's not part of the resolution. Todd, can you help on that?
Sure. Just giving it some thought. I'd have to talk to the town attorney a little bit about this and staff, but I think off the top of my head, I think the most appropriate place, because you know, we went through this with staff of that history lesson that you so graciously gave us at our work, at our, you know, work plan conversation was helpful. And I think the best way to go is that we would always look to a resolution. And I think, you know, this resolution that's before you, if you, you attach, you attach anything to this resolution, this fee schedule, and we highlight it in that schedule. And the attachment would be the historical context. And I know that staff has talked about this already of going to some of our volunteer groups and working with them to, to memorialize the historical value of that group. And then why we, the council is, is considering this and made this decision. And so you have a nice thoughtful history background and, and it, and it justifies why we're doing what we're doing. And then, you know, I think that would be helpful for future leaders, you know, five, 10 years from now, we're all gone. You know, they have that ability of at least, you know, having the background, you know, any council starting, you know, next year can, can overturn this resolution. So I think having that information would be helpful for future leaders and, and possibly attach it, you know, to the resolution. So it's easy to, to find. We have a.
That sounds great. That sounds great. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions?
I have a few.
Go ahead, Leela.
Thank you. Thanks, Ashley. This is really helpful. I just had a few questions about sort of a few different areas. So one of them is where we grant, you know, like a, like a preferential rate to somebody like I saw in there. There were times where we had a preferential rate for Larkspur or for CYO. Do we, you know, try to make sure that our residents then get a preferential rate in their facilities? Or, you know, do we try to kind of get some reciprocity going there when we do that?
That is so specifically with CYO, it's not something that we can, got a little bit more information from Rochelle because I'm not as well versed in, in CYO background. But it's run through Catholic charities and in the local jurisdictions and parishes, there's a space issue for teams for top triads, practice times and games, Genesee rental spaces at a premium in Marin because most gym space belongs to a school district. The CYO teams use whatever they can get since it's high school basketball season at the same time. And they using their facilities is very difficult. Neil Cummins and Hall Middle Schools have the only gyms available for a large number of the St. Pat's parish teams to use. And there's no discount given based on where a player lives because the players on a St. Pax team in general are living within the parish, which for St. Pat is large. Which for St. Pat's is Larkspur or Corner Madera. Special rates are reviewed and approved by town council. Example, Twin Cities Little League and Twin Cities softball in St. Pat's is defined by town civics organizations identified in the fee schedule under section four. There's not really a way for us to do a reciprocity. Does that help answer a little bit of that?
For CYO, there was something in here, I'm trying to see if I can find it about where Larkspur, we granted Larkspur preferential rate to, but maybe I'm.
We referenced it, I think, in some of the youth programs, some of the youth classes, because when we're offering classes on school campuses, those are open to, to residents of Corner Madera and Larkspur. So it's kind of a fair thing. We don't want to have just our, the residents that are attending, say Neil Cummins, be able to register a week early and yet their, their classmate, which is, you know, equal participant and attendee on campus that lives outside of Corner Madera to not be able to register at the same time. So that was our best way to, to be, to equal and fair along that, that process.
Right. Yeah. No, that makes sense, especially because the school district is, is joint. But do we know for like Larkspur Rec, if they were doing something similar, like do we get treated the same way as Larkspur residents?
I, I think I asked Larkspur Recreation, I don't think that they have a resident, non-resident rate.
Okay. So it's just the same for everybody. Okay. And then on that point, I, it seems like for some of our stuff, we have a resident, non-resident structure and then other stuff we just don't. And I wondered if you could talk about how that decision is made, which one it's going to be.
We're trying to move across the board to have a resident, non-resident rate because we do want to give priority and registration for, for our residents.
Oh, great. Okay. And that goes right into my next question. For some of the, I love that you mentioned the daddy-daughter and the father-son because we, our family is definitely missing those. But those are an example of something that fills up lickety-split. Is there ever any thought of, you know, maybe allowing like Corner Madera residents to sign up for those slots first before it's opened to the general public?
Yeah, it's hard to do. It's a little bit more challenging to do a priority window for like general class registration. A lot jurisdictions do it. But I think when it comes to a program or an event specifically that the town and the department is putting on, I think that is something that we could easily establish. And general function is usually like a week or two week priority.
Right. Yeah. Okay. And then I was wondering about when there's discounts for nonprofits, are those, do they have to be like 501(c)(3)'s, like officially incorporated nonprofits? Or what if we have a more? Okay. So like a more informal community group wouldn't be able to take advantage of that. Okay. And similar to that, on the community engagement piece, like the special event permits, I'm just wondering if we've thought about those rates, you know, and how they relate to encouraging or discouraging residents from getting together with their neighbors and putting on a block party or, you know, things like that. I've done that with neighbors here and, you know, we already, you already have to get insurance. That's like $350. So I just wonder if we've thought about whether it makes sense to tack on that permit fee as well.
Yeah, right now the staff hasn't recommended making any changes to the $100 special event permit because we wanted to recognize that although we, you know, support community engagement, community bonding and community building activities. When we have an event, say a turkey trot that comes to us, we want to make sure that town staff are able to review it in all departments. And for paying the $100 fee, we're essentially having all of our department staff review it from an ends lens of their, their area of expertise. We want to make sure that the safety guidelines are in place. We want to make sure that everything's been thought for. We want to make sure that participants in the town are all safe. And it, there's a lot of staff time that goes into that and a lot of staff thought. So right now it, it barely goes towards offsetting some of that staff time. And then in addition, the town often also grants special events more staff time on day of event support, equipment rental, shutting down intersections or helping to clear spaces. Right now, I think we're, we're really happy with what our recommendation is, but we're open to council's feedback and, and further direction going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, I just have a couple. On the facility attendant, is that required if I rent the community center?
That is our recommendation because we have staff that will be there to open the building and stay the entire time. And then as well as set up tables and chairs so that our renters are not using that themselves. That's going to protect the renters from potential injury and operating our equipment on our facilities as well as protecting our equipment from getting damaged by people that don't know how to utilize it.
Okay. Was there any thought to somehow connecting the community center fee with the, the facility attendant fee? Because it's almost like, if I'm hearing this correctly, if I pay $215 an hour for the community center, I'm also paying another 25 for the facility attendant, correct? So it actually winds up being 240 an hour?
Let me go back and double check that because we are going back and forth. And we wanted to make sure that it was separated out so that it was clear on what, what expenses went where. So that during future recommendations, we have a, an easy way to evaluate that. Tim, if you can find that information before me, you can jump in.
Yeah, and, and that part makes sense. I'm just looking at from the general public view, when this gets published out on our website. And I'm looking at this, I'm looking at community center is X amount of dollars. And then, you know, three line items, John says facility attendant. I may not connect that. Oh, if I do community center, I have to get the facility attendant. You just may want to figure out how to connect those two. So again, if I'm just in the public, I can figure it out. And then
So yes, you are correct. It is a facility tenant fee plus the, the top of the rental fee. And that is pretty standard amongst all of our industry standards. They have a straight fee. And then a facility attendant and the dependent, what kind of that, they may tack on a second facility. And there's always an extra fees they do. So almost every city we surveyed had a straight fee just for the rental of the building. And then a facility tenant fee on top of that. So that's pretty standard.
Okay. No, and I agree with all that. You just may want to somehow footnote it when you publish the fee schedule so people connect the two. And if they're out there trying to figure out where I want to go, they really see it's 240 an hour if you add it up and look at it that way. The other question is for the town civic organizations. I know you're working on the fee waivers. Will that include a, a facility attendant? Like if the Lions Club wants to use it and it's under a fee waiver, will they have to pay for a facility attendant? Or is that on a case-by-case basis? And I selected the Lions. So you're smiling, so go for it.
Yeah, so maybe two separate conversations. A part of that is for council's consideration tonight, we want to have that adopted. But again, specific agreements for each group. So we'll be able to essentially negotiate and determine each of the terms. So not preset for each group. We still can talk about it individually.
Okay. And then when you get those agreements, you'll bring them before the commission and then bring them before us for approval? Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions from town council? Yeah, Eli.
Thanks, Fred. Sorry. Your excellent questions just reminded me that I had two others just to make sure I understand. One, so on the, on all of the different programs that are listed under kids' club after-school programs, I just wanted to, to clarify from my understanding, those are additive, right? So if I do like, if, if I need, say, before school, which is $14 a day, and I also need, you know, like, like an after-school or something, that's a separate fee, I pay both of those together to get, okay, so it, it just is additive. And it's like a menu essentially of, of the services. Okay, got it. Great. And then my one other question was on the proposed fee schedule, Menke Park has a rental price. And I was just curious, is that supposed to be specifically like for the gazebo? Or is the idea broader than that?
It's broader. It includes the gazebo and the entire Menke Park area. So Piccolo Pavilion and the park.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Along Eli's question, does that also, would that also include the parking lot? That, that whole space again, like if it's a, you know, I go back to like Oktoberfest, or is it just the park, 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 park?
It can potentially include the parking lot because in order to rent Menke Park, the practice by our, our department in town has been to require a special event permit. And within a special event permit, you can request parking to be considered and reviewed and approved. So that could be included in it.
Okay. So would there be an extra charge for that? Because that means Public Works would have to go out there and actually block off that parking lot?
That's where our special event permit comes in.
Okay.
And so that $100 is, is going towards offsetting the department review and support of special requests.
Charles, go ahead. I think you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. You know, these events that we'll get back to doing, they're very popular, right? Say the father-daughter dance. Why would we limit anybody from attending? And why wouldn't we just do more of them if they're incredibly popular, right? Is that, is there any capability to do that? Or traditionally, is there a reason why we, outside of just the, the limit to them, instead of extending and, you know, if a concert sells out, they sometimes add a, a third day, right? So why not do that and, and really make sure that we utilize all our facilities and give all the opportunity to everyone?
Unfortunately, those events happened prior to my employment. A couple of thoughts of potential answers for you is that, yes, we can, we can offer more. I think a lot of events are encouraged attendance by who's attending. So you want to attend with your neighbors or your friends, and that might generate a waitlist. So that could be part of the reason why the, the request for a priority registration.
Yeah. Well, and then that gets to ultimately, if we're having a lot, a lot, a lot of residents and, and they want to be, and then we have outside demand as well, or different social groups, that there's some way to, to organize those kind of events based on friends and, you know, cohorts kind of to being together in the future, exploring that would be, i-if you can, something to, to look into, to make those more beneficial for all the, all the people using those events.
Hey, Charles, if I can remember, because the city and Park and Rec, and this, if I can remember, because it has been a while since we've done those events. I believe in the past that they were, I want to say doubled up. Where it just wasn't one Saturday and that was it, like the, there could be two Saturdays with the same event to get more people an opportunity to attend, if I can remember. The other thing is, I thought I saw Emily Janowski's hand raised for a minute. Because she is co-chair on the Park and Rec Commission. Rebecca, can you bring Emily over? Maybe she can just shine some light on this for us?
Yes, I'm, I'm, just allow her to talk or bring her over to panelist's side.
Why don't you bring her over to panelist, if you don't mind?
She's moving over. I will say that, yes, you are correct. We did have several. It was a series. And I think the months of April and May, all the weekends were dedicated to these events. And they had a mother son dance and a father-daughter dance, and then a dad and son game field day and a mother-daughter tea. And they had all of these series of events. And I think they had three or four or so of each of the, the more popular ones. And then they did sell out. I, I'd, I'd heard stories about people waiting at, at midnight to sign on and, and, and get their, their preferred spots. And then you'd see an active bartering going on on next door saying, I got Saturday, wants to trade for Sunday. And they were very popular. And I think they maxed out the weekends that they could have, given that they also wanted to have the space available for public rental. So there's really a limited number of, of weekends that they could host these.
Thanks.
One thing before Emily jumps in to provide additional feedback is that I have heard from staff is when there are multiple events, it adds the potential for confusion of which, which date people registered for. So they, staff did get very disappointed. Say daddies and daughters showing up for the wrong date and then not having the space to come in.
Thanks. Charles, hold on. If you just hold on a minute, let Emily jump in and then I'll go back to you. And just one quick comment. I think people are pretty much where, but Ashley started, I think the day she started was the day we went into lockdown with COVID. So there really hasn't been any of these types of events. But I know between myself, Emily, others that have been around with Park and Rec experience, we've been able to provide staff background and we're available for them to do that. So with that, Emily, if you could go ahead and chime in.
Great, thank you. Actually Rebecca said it as well as I could, but that was what I wanted to just jump in and say is that in the past, to meet the demand, because they are such popular events, that was exactly what the town did. So we had, I want to say, two or three for each of the father-daughter and the mother-son because they were just such popular events.
All right. Thanks. Charles, go ahead.
Well, yeah. So my, my question is, ultim-ultimately, do we have alternative venues or other ways to facilitate that demand in the future? Is that also showed very high under things people want moving forward? So and then the other one is, is we're, we're moving forward with a reservation system, right? That's online and more kind of easily decipherable and understandable. Is that, is that correct?
We have not changed systems at this time.
But are we, are we moving towards one? Or could our current reservation system ultimately help facilitate a better understanding of those type of social events where the, you know, friends want to be with friends and things like that, like, or is that, you know, to make it more?
See who's participating, who's registered for something because you're not able to, to share that. It's probably, it's private information through a registration system.
Okay.
So nothing yet. But I know that you've got more connections to, to technology. So let me know what you find. I'm happy to, to test it out.
Yeah. Ultimately, I don't like getting into privacy issues in, in the public arena. So I'll just leave it alone.
Thanks, Charles. Are there any more questions? Great questions, by the way. Let me go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody from public wishing to speak on the Park and Rec fee resolution? And while we're waiting for potential hands, Rebecca, did we get any email comments?
Thank you, Marca Sisa. I'm just refreshing the email. We had not received any emails, public comments on the fee schedule.
Okay, thanks. And I do not see any hands raised. So I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to town council for discussion and a possible motion. And with that, Eli, would you like to kick us off? Thanks.
Yeah, please. Thank you, Fred. First of all, you know, I realize that there's a, a ton of work that went into this. And I think, you know, Ashley, you and all the Park and Rec team, and especially our Park and Rec Commission have done a killer job, you know, getting us to where we are on this. And I, and I wanted also to say after your presentation that just, you know, you and a lot of your team joined the town at a very difficult time, just in relation to COVID. And you guys have just, I think, blown us all away with what you've accomplished. So thank you for everything. Yeah, I think, I think that what we've got here is a really good start. I, I tell you that for me personally, just to be honest, I think I'm struggling with just from a sequence perspective, talking about this, you know, revamping this fee schedule when we've got the, you know, the, the equity training like right on the horizon. And I, like, I, you know, if, if there's like an, an exigency that we need to get this adopted so that you guys know what you're charging for stuff that you, like for programs that you need to roll out before we can get through the DEI training, then I, you know, I get that. But I don't, you know, I'm uneasy about like hunting, so to speak, on, on equity and saying, oh, well, we'll just fold that into the fee schedule next time around. So, you know, I think that's like on just large scale. I think that's what I'm having the hardest time with here. I think, you know, generally the details of what we've done here is really good. You know, some of the stuff I would like to have a discussion with the council about, you know, I, I know that the, the historical policy in Corner Madera has been cost recovery. And I know that, that, you know, Ashley, you and your staff and, and, you know, even your predecessors have done a really good job of offering subsidies for lower-income residents, which I think is absolutely crucial. You know, just frankly, I think there's got to be somewhere where like a low-income family can have a birthday party for free. Like, you know, I just think that, that that's a requirement. So there's certain stuff in here that, that either we're charging for, or I'm, I'm understanding that we're charging for, but I may be wrong because I'm a little unclear on like, you know, the policy differentiation between like renting something out and just like spontaneously using it with your friends or whatever. So I, I, I think that's a discussion. But like, you know, I just feel like stuff that is like just out there in the parks, like picnic tables, benches, playgrounds, you know, like athletic fields, basketball court, volleyball tennis, whatever, the, the stuff that's like just out there, I, I really feel like I'd like to see us pivot more towards having that be free. You know, I definitely get a rental, a rental fee for like, you know, when you want to like monopolize a big piece of infrastructure, like if you want to rent out the rec center or, you know, other things that, that are like a big, you know, capital investment on the town's part to build and maintain. I totally get that. But I think like from, from, you know, like the perspective of like picnic tables or, or, you know, courts and stuff, I would love to see a little bit more kind of hands-off approach. And again, I, I'm all for the town providing a way to, you know, if, if it's online, that's great, could be anonymous, but just like to facilitate, like, like scheduling, right? Because I think, like you said, actually, that's totally important. We can't have two, you know, two different groups show up to play tennis on the courts at the same time and get into a fight. I think if there's an easy way for people to access to just know when the tennis court's, you know, going to be used or whatever, if it's, if it's like a larger group or something, I think stuff like that makes perfect sense. I think also the point you brought up about wanting to have a point of contact so that we can make sure folks are aware of our rules and our policies before they use, you know, the, the amenities, that makes perfect sense. I think that's great. But it's just, it's the charging on smaller stuff where I just kind of would like to maybe have a discussion with the town about, is it, is it, do we need to be charging for, for these, for some of this stuff? You know, I, I'd like to get into that. I, I don't know that we've really had a discussion too. I think that's, you know, that's kind of what, what I'm struggling with most here in terms of incorporating equity and incorporating, you know, justice for lower-income residents and, and families and making sure that we've got equal opportunity for access to all this good stuff that we offer in town, much of which, you know, the, like the, you know, much of which, you know, the, like, the, you know, the fields and such don't, don't, I think, cost us all that much in maintenance. So I'll stop there. I don't, I don't want to talk in circles, but I would love if we could just kind of like dive into this, or like schedule a time to really dive into this, because I think it's important, and I don't want to see us just, you know, oh, we'll get to it next year, we'll get to it next year. I think it's too easy to fall into that pattern, even if we totally, you know, honestly do intend to tackle it. So anyway, thank you, Fred. Sorry, that was a little long-winded.
Oh, no problem. I appreciate it. I think two things. Todd, can you address this? If I have this correct, if we pass the, a part age, you feel comfortable as passing this, even with the equity part, equity part. Two is that after you go through the program in the month, next month or so, if you find that there's things you need to, that need to be changed, you're going to bring the fee schedule back to us immediately, right? You're not going to, you're not going to wait a year to bring it back to us, correct? Can you just kind of get into that a little, please? Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, we, our plan is to come back if necessary. Again, this fee schedule is outdated, and there's a lot of things coming back to the council. I'll say, just based on what Councilmember Beckman brought up, you know, and I think Ashley can, and Rebecca can speak to some of it much better than I. But you got to be really careful with when we talk, I think we have a lot of equity built into this fee schedule, and especially on the park and rec. You know, again, I don't think we're doing it justice, and I think publicly to have that conversation is important. I'll tell you that we put hundreds of thousands of dollars in a maintenance a year into those fields and that, and that park. So that's a piece of it. And I think when you start to like help one group, you have to be really consist, you have to be really careful about consistency. We just, we just have to be careful specifically to, you know, to, to, to certain areas in the parks and renting it out. I think that there's a lot of, I mean, it came about because there's a lot of issues that went the other way. I know Rebecca was talking to me this morning about, you know, some of those examples. So I think it would be good for council to hear it. And honestly, I think it's good. Staff needs to hear from all of you on what your concerns are, so we can bet them and see if we have some, you know, some, some similar thoughts amongst the council, so we can come back to you with what you're asking us to present. Because right now, I got to be honest, I don't, I'm unclear. I'm very unclear on where we're at. You know, I think on the other one of just the, the specific civic groups that we've spelled out, A three J, those are groups that absolutely, on a consistent basis, volunteer and collaborate with the town. A lot of time put on the programs, and the town is helping them put it on. The town subsidizes and helps them provide services to the town. We have a longstanding history of that A three J. It's really easy. We haven't, I, I don't know of any others. I mean, there's a lot of thought that has gone into it, but as we go, certainly, if there's someone we missed, we want to know about it, we can easily add them to it. But I might thought, you know, I know Ashley mentioned that we would come back to you with each agreement as we, you know, come to an agreement with each of them. I don't recommend that. I think, I think what we would want to do is, is bring maybe a policy to you, a standard policy of how we treat these groups with a criteria. Have you bless that, and then we would approve them at the staff level. You know, because I don't want to, having 11 conversations each time, we're just going to get, I mean, this is, it's a tough conversation, but I do think this is the appropriate time to give us the feedback. Councilmember Beckman and others to, to what, what really, what bothers you about this fee schedule?
Okay, before we get to Lila and Bob, Rebecca, can you just chime in? Because you were like raising your hands a few times. You can add to the conversation.
Thank you, Marca Cisa. I just have a bit of background that may possibly put Councilmember Beckman's mind at ease with respect to the rental of basketball court and the volleyball court. That, it's, it's my understanding that historically, that's not meant to nickel and dime the community and force people to consider renting it when they want to just have a pickup game. It's, it was meant to capture use such as groups that wanted to have a volleyball tournament or a basketball tournament. And they take, they, they look for courts around the community that they can mobilize and plan a, a weekend tournament and take it over so that the community, it isn't available for community use. So that is the type of use that that fee would be meant for, at least historically, and that's my understanding.
All right, thanks. Cool. You go to Lila and then Bob.
Thanks, Fred. I just wanted to mention, I think some of what I'm struggling with here is it's a little hard to evaluate. I feel like we're kind of evaluating these fees in a vacuum a little bit, you know? We're sort of comparing them to what they used to be. But I don't feel like I have a lot of context in terms of, you know, what our priorities are. What, how are we deciding how to set a fee in the first place? You know, are we looking solely cost recovery? Are we looking at trying to encourage people to use the facilities? Are we looking at trying to be consistent with neighboring jurisdictions? And I think there's a lot of different factors there that I'm sure it's probably all of the above and maybe more. But I think for me, it's a little hard to evaluate when we don't really know how we're prioritizing those issues. So I guess for me, I think we, I think it would make sense. I don't know if the council is the right group to do that, or it seems like there should be kind of a development of principles that we're using to guide these decisions.
All right, thanks. Before we go to Bob, Tim, can you maybe just address the analysis part you did on the fee schedule, on the fee part of it? And this is one thing, just to chime in, on all the years I was on Park and Rec, and Emily can probably validate this. I don't think we ever went through this process where staff actually went out and surveyed other towns. I just don't remember that. Just really quickly, if you can just chime in what the process was.
Sure, absolutely. So we basically, with myself and Rochelle, called our friends and neighbors and said, hey, we have these amenities. What do you charge for them? How do you charge for them? What's included, what's not included? And basically, we had a giant folder and kind of made that Excel sheet for you to look at. So we kind of compared what, what we were at, and like I said, hadn't been updated in several years, to where kind of industry standard was in the area up here. I myself spent many years in my reputation in the peninsula, so I called a couple of buddies in the peninsula and said, hey, where are we, just so I can have an idea, just across the bridge, what is it like? And we're pretty much comparable to everybody else. So we kind of just pulled, kind of cast that wide net and kind of brought it together. And I think it's something that rec department should do every year to kind of figure out where they are in industry standard, so they don't fall so behind there out of, out of compliance, just out of touch of what's going on in the rental of facilities, indoor and outdoor.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Bob, and then Charles.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide some background and history on CYO, because that's actually, my involvement with the town started with CYO basketball. Before I was on the council, I was highly involved with CYO. In fact, I think I coached 14 girls' basketball teams. All three of my daughters played. And the reason we asked for and got the rate that we did, two-thirds to three-quarters of the players on CYO basketball and volleyball are not St. Patrick's kids. They are public school children. So it is really a community-serving organization. It really serves the community, and it provides basketball and volleyball. Parks and Rec doesn't do that, and it provides it in a really competitive way. It's run by all volunteers, and that was why they got that rate. And I just wanted to provide that background, so everybody knows that it is truly a community-based organization. It's not something that's being, you know, given special treatment for St. Pat's. But I just wanted to interject that, because I know Lita was asking about that and provide that bit of background. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Charles?
Yeah, thanks, Bob. My, my oldest boys are now doing CYO. My wife coaches. So, you know, I, I, they do go to Neil Cummins to the, to the gym there, and they're also students there. But I, I think it's, it's an important community event. And I've been to the other facilities around, and I think that having access to that and providing that is actually a great thing this community does, because we have really nice facilities, you know? And then I really want to speak to Eli Beckman's question about picnic tables in particular. I think, you know, my, my personal understanding and policy that I interested in is the cost recovery, but the idea is that the town is a not, you know, nonprofit providing a service. And the service is, we pick up the trash, we provide restrooms, we maintain the lawns, and we replace the wood when the picnic tables. And we just administer proper distribution and policing of the facilities, right? And that has a cost recovery. And ultimately, if there's, you know, if we want to put an equity lens on it as far as financial equity, I think you need to investigate how to do that correctly. So I would say we do need more time to do that. But also, I don't like, I, I actually feel it's discriminatory to say, hey, you know, it should be based on cost. I think if ultimately, we provide enough tables, people that want to reserve it for the security of having it for their birthdays could have it. And then we'll have excess tables for people that still want to stop by. So my thing is, is if we see pent-up demand and people are fighting in the morning at six in the morning to like put a tablecloth over them, like, you know, the idea that we're, we have preferential, you know, places where people really like having parties, they'll pay more to be there, that they have that opportunity, and that that could subsidize more picnic tables overall and benches and things like that. It's this idea of creating a Parks and Rec experience and basically trying to get money to continue to improve on that experience for everyone as much as possible. That's really what I'm interested in, and not trying to limit it and make it a scarce resource or make it a free-for-all. So the other, the other issues, I don't take as much of a, an understanding on. I mean, ultimately, I just had my, the birthday party for my two kids in the park, and we elected not even to use one of the tables. We brought our own folding table and picked a part of the park that usually isn't used for that, just to avoid the issue, because the, most of the tables already were like not reserved, but just kind of spoken for. So, you know, that's, that's, that's my, my experience with that as well. And, you know, I think also with CYO, the, the, the use, the shared use agreement that we have with the town, with, with the school district, the school district director is a really big fan of youth sports overall. He thinks it's very healthy for the community and for the children. And I think it, it's important, I, I feel like I've talked to him enough to really understand that providing that at the lowest cost possible, with the idea of cost recovery is probably in the, would be supported by the, the other side of that as well. And maybe they can speak to it during the equity discussion, because I know he's really into equity and at the educational level and for students. And he might bring a really good discussion point and understanding of how we understand those fees. So hopefully that helps, but yeah.
All right, thanks. Todd, before we get to you, let me just go to Bob and then Todd.
Yeah. I just wanted to echo what Charles said about reservations on the picnic tables. Because again, having done it many times, sometimes you just want to have a party for your kids and their friends in the park, and you want to be sure that you can actually do it. And being able to reserve a table is the way to do that. And you can tell them, yeah, here's where we're going to be, and all the kids can show up, and it's a great time. So I think it's a service that we provide as much as anything else, because also there's the cleanup and everything else. So I totally agree with you, and that's something I think we should continue to do. Thanks.
Todd, go ahead. Thanks, Bob.
I would just say, I clearly, we clearly have some really good questions and concerns from the council. One thing I do recommend, from a cost recovery standpoint, I'll tell you that even, like I explained before, our budget's about 1.3 million, 4.5 million, 450,000 of that is paid for the town regardless, and good times and bad. And it's something we want to think about, you know, public, government is responsible for public safety, infrastructure and governance. In those bad times, every five to seven years, when we have an economic downturn, if you look across the board in the state of California, the first department to get cut is Parks and Rec. And we want to be self-sustaining. And, and so when we step back and we said, look, to be able to do that, we can afford 450,000 or 500,000 a year with subsidies, you know, helping those in need. That other money, and I'll tell you right now, even in the budget where it's set aside 800,000, that that's going to be cost recovery, 200,000, we're already 200,000 short there. We're going to subsidize it as it is. It's a fine line. And so when we talk about, we want to, we want to do this, or we want to lower this fee, these fees are standards in the industry. And I'll challenge you that if we look across the board and we may have to do this, you may direct us to, our fees aren't higher than everyone else's. They're articulatable. We can explain it. It's the service we provide, and if we have to do more work with that, we'll come back to you for that. But we have a budget right now in play, and the fees, whether it's approved tonight, the schedule, or we keep going with the old one, it's based on that budget. And so we don't have to approve this tonight. I don't want you to feel like you have to problem solve this at the dais, but it would be helpful to give us some feedback, you know, moving forward on coming back to you with some of these discussion points. But I, I just want to make really clear that, you know, I think, I think the other piece that we're missing, that we could do a better job of, we can always, we have the subsidies in place. We are equitable. I'll tell you that when it's brought to our attention, we subsidize. We do that because that's the direction of the council of the past and the present. I think what we can do a better job is of promoting it, going out to those neighborhoods, to those groups in our town, and really, you know, letting them know what's available to them, both in childcare subsidies and within our programs. That's what we need to do better. I think that's what I'm hearing for from staff, from a staff standpoint, and so we're going to go do that. And then on these other items, this is good feedback. I think we can go back to the commission, and, and we have a lot of commissioners on the call, and we can have some of these other thoughtful conversations and look at data in a way that's helpful for the council, and maybe even have a council liaison with that, with that as we move forward. So I don't want you to feel like you're in a corner and you have to approve this tonight. But I'll just tell you that, you know, I think a lot of thought has come into it. I think staff's done a good job. They continue to. I think you want policy. You want something behind it of like, why did we do that? We should do more, and it's, it's there in writing, so I totally get it. But I think we could talk about this all night. So I'm kind, I think we need to step back and go, are you comfortable approving it now, knowing that we have more work to do? I think we're going to do work at the commission's point, come back to you, also equity within the same year. Or do you just want to say, no, we don't want, we don't want to approve it right now? Come back to us later, you know, either way. Our budget is based on the current fee schedule in place right now.
So, thanks, Todd. So the, so the question is, do we feel comfortable right now with passing it this way, the way it is? Having staff come back to us and answer some of the questions we have, knowing that this can be revised at any time? We, we're not going to wait a year. Staff can come back to us within the next 30 to 60 days, plus or minus. If I have this correct, this fee schedule actually would kick in July 1st, correct, Ashley?
That's correct. The only time sensitivity is our publicizing in the, in the summer activity guide, which would go to print mid-March. That's, that's the only time consideration if we wanted to implement any of these new fees as of July 1st.
Okay, so based upon that, just quickly, Eli, I know you had your hands raised, just really quick, if I can just get a feel from people, if you feel comfortable passing this tonight with the caveats I said, it sounds like staff knows the direction they need to go, or if we want to hold off and then have staff come back to us. Eli, why don't you go ahead? Look like you were raising your hand.
Thanks, Fred. So on the whole, just like, you know, I, I hate doing this, but on the whole, I don't think I'm ready to, to approve this tonight. But if, you know, I definitely don't want to hold up Ashley and her team being able to print the summer activity schedule. So I, I feel like most of the stuff that I, you know, wanted to discuss further is not summer activities. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure what all is or isn't in the summer activity schedule. But like, like, things like your programs, I think are all great. So like, that's not the stuff that I have serious questions on. I really want to understand the subsidies better. And I, I don't know why, you know, like I said, I know you guys do a great job already of offering subsidies, but I don't know why that's not spoken to in the staff report or reflected in the fee schedule, because I think that's like an integral part of the fee schedule, right, is knowing, you know, knowing what you're actually going to pay. So like, if there's a path forward, at least from, from me personally, if there's a path forward, it's like approved stuff that's in, that's got to go be approved for the, for the summer activity schedule, please let me know. But if it's, if it's just an up or down tonight, you know, take it or leave it on what's here, I, I'm just not there yet.
Okay, Lila, I'm sorry, Charles, go ahead. You raise your hand.
I, I would just say, ultimately, I feel like I could move it forward and approve it with the idea that we can address Councilmember Eli Beckman's concerns moving forward and not in a year-long timeline if necessary, because I, I don't discount, but ultimately, if he chooses to say nay, I think that that's totally within his right.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
I'm with Charles. I think we can do this.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
I'm with Charles. I think we can do this.
Okay, Lila?
Yeah, I can support doing this tonight. I totally get Eli's concern that if we, you know, do it tonight, it's, it's, there's always a risk that it's, a year goes by, a year goes by before we've, you know, come back to it. But I think there is enough interest in revisiting this, that I would feel comfortable passing this tonight and then continuing to work on it.
All right, thanks. And I feel comfortable. I think I have more background with Park and Rec. So some of the stuff with picnic tables, basketball courts, that usage, I think I just have the understanding, again, because of my background. So I feel comfortable. I feel comfortable that staff will come back to us much sooner rather than later. I just have that comfort level that they're not going to sit on this, whether that be policies or coming back to us with subsidies, how that works. So with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve the revised Park and Rec fee schedule for 2022 and 2023.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Charles. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Rebecca, call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman? Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Revazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Marca Cisa.
Yes, and I appreciate everybody's time, and also Emily, in the Park and Rec Commission's time. This is probably- Um, this is probably in all the years I've been on Park and Recs and the short time I've been on town council. This is probably the most robust conversation we've had around a park and rec fee schedule. Since I can remember, and again, I think it ties back to staff and the work that they're doing. So with that, we'll go ahead and move back, move over to item 6B, uh, which is approval for job class for two current classifications. Uh, and we're back to the Park and Rec Department, Ashley.
It's still me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ashley, Mr. Mayor, I just thought I, this was such a good conversation. I, I hope I'm not out of line, but I'm not sure that we had public comment on that last item. Did we? Does anybody know? Amy or Rebecca?
I, I believe I, I did open for public comment, but go ahead, Amy.
We did.
I think, I think we, I think we did, but I know we then had so much discussion I was.
But we can, we can always reopen.
Okay, so, so let's do this because I, I believe I did have public comment and I believe I closed it. And I believe all the foregoing conversation was around um our discussion. But given that, uh, we do have one hand raised, so just give her all the opportunity, if you can bring Patty over. I'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Yes. Okay, I am muting Patty.
Patty, can you? Patty, just as long as it's, it's on the topic that we just discussed, correct?
You did actually ask for public comment and it hadn't occurred to me to say anything then, but when Eli brought that up about. You want to just have somewhere for someone who has uh limited means to be able to go have a birthday party. I thought maybe you could have means testing for somebody to be able to get a, a specific fee and they don't pay the regular fee. And they're able to do it. So I, I like that um. You guys are concerned about the equity in um doing that, and I hope that your equity includes. Old people and not just uh the diversity that we usually think of with diversity and equity. So here's for the old people and uh, yes, I'm very glad that you're taking care of fixing the wood on the, on the tables. Because that was my big issue last year. So thank you for that.
All right, thanks, Patty. And I think we always try to take care of our seniors as much as we can and we're, Park and Rec's well aware of that. Uh, let's go to Karen.
Okay, Karen, I should be unmuted. There you go. So I'm somebody that doesn't use. Any of the facilities. I don't have picnics in the park. I'm not playing hoops. I'm not doing any of that stuff. So my concern whenever I receive the uh catalog of all of the efforts that are. Underway, uh, under the umbrella of Parks and Rec is that. I don't want to, I do want there to be some uh. Means testing as far as things, you know, covering their, their own uh, you know, whatever it takes to do them. Because I don't want to pay for more than I'm getting benefit of. I don't know how else to say that. I appreciate that there's a certain amount of what our town does that um. That I'm comfortable with, but I just don't want to get out. I don't want to have the town. Getting carried away and the people like me that aren't getting any benefit at all of a lot of this stuff. Is, is covering the, providing that resource that I'm not getting benefit of. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I believe staff. Yeah, yes, it does.
So that's all I want to say about it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Uh, we're off park and rec fee schedule and we're on to job classifications. Thanks, Ashley.
Let me switch report outlines here. Okay, uh, my second um business item for your consideration this evening is um review and possible approval of two job descriptions for two current classifications. Within the Parks and Recreation Department, which shares rec aid and recreation assistant. Um, at the end of 2021, staff discovered that job descriptions were not available for those two active classifications. And in multiple department review paper, digital files were unable to find record of unapproved part-time or excuse me, reference to those descriptions. Although they were approved as part-time salary schedules. Um, so staff asked the council review and consider approving the two draft descriptions include, included in attachment one and two. Um, so the department is able to recruit additional employees needed to support the childcare and summer camp as well as front desk positions. And staff would also like to provide current employees in the two classifications with a copy of their job descriptions. So the responsibilities and expectations can be clearly communicated and evaluated during annual performance reviews. The proposed job classifications were drafted to best represent the current function of each of those positions. And the related responsibilities and expectations were benchmarked with comparable positions in like agencies. Um, currently, there are seven active employees in the recreation aid classification and seven in the recreation assistant classification. Most of the employees support childcare and summer camp programs and the recreation, recreation aid classifications and entry level position. As an individual develops professionally, they're qualified for more responsibilities, which is included in the recreation assistant position. Um, compensation begins at minimum wage, which is $15 as of January of 2022. The recreation assistant classification includes responsibilities that can both serve the youth programming. Through activity planning, implementation and evaluation and serve general department support in the form of front desk customer service and supporting department events and activities. Um, two of the seven current recreation assistants work in the department office at the front desk. Um, both have been with the department for years and have grown within the positions, taking on special projects, responsibilities to support the general function of the department. And their compensation ranges 16 to $30 per hour. Department is in immediate need to recruit for additional employees to support both the childcare programs. And the upcoming summer camp and the department also needs additional support to order to maintain public hours at the front desks. Support program registration and facility rentals, greet classes and program attendees, answer questions. And provide general customer service and access to lobby restrooms. There's no fiscal impact associated with approval of this item. Um, options tonight for you at request is um one approved job descriptions for two classifications within the park recreation department. Recreation aid and recreation assistant positions as proposed. Um, approved with modifications or three provide additional direction to staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions from town council members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone put from the public wishing to speak on uh the job classifications for Park and Rec Department? Did we get any email? Rebecca versus TCM mail dot org?
Just refresh the email and no, we did not receive any email to public comment and I am not seeing any raised hands currently.
Okay, thanks. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Eli.
I'm happy to move that we approve the job classifications and I want to say good, good on you, Ashley, for finding out, you know, just reviewing the record and finding that we didn't have this on file.
Is it? Thanks, Bob. So we have a Eli, I approved the motion and Bob seconded it. Is there any further discussion? I will go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Member Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
America Sisa.
Uh, yes, and Ashley, appreciate you being on this call for longer and you probably wanted to be, but we appreciate all your input. You also, Tim and Emily, and there's several other Park and Rec commissioners. Uh, we appreciate your attendance also um on these matters related to Park and Rec. Thanks for that. Now you can go put your kids to sleep.
Thank you for your time this evening. I look forward to bringing back a future discussion soon.
Thanks. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move to uh 6C, which is consideration. Possible adoption of resolution number four slash two oh 22 to prove the revisions for, to the budget. Um, for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And Todd, are you going to start this off or is Daria, you guys want to tag team it? Your call.
Ari, I'll let Daria pick it off. I'll jump in as necessary.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Um, this item um concerns the mid-year budget revision for the current fiscal year. Um, in your staff report, you'll see that I've divided the budget revision into three separate areas. Um, the first is the general fund operating, which as you know, is where all of the day-to-day expenses and revenues. Related to running the town are recorded. And within um the general fund revenue, there are three major components. Um. Or revision, there are three major components and the first concerns the ending fund balance of the last fiscal year. And how the unallocated portion of the ending fund balance should be spent. As you'll recall, there was approximately $3.8 million in the ending fund balance that was unallocated. Last year, that's in addition to the $3.8 million um 20% reserve. Um, as mentioned in an earlier meeting, um, we found out that the state had overpaid the town about $800,000 in sales tax in the previous year. And it was going to be deducted from the town's current year apportionment. And so this leaves approximately uh $3,013,164 unallocated as part of last year's ending balance. Um, the finance committee met in January to discuss this unallocated balance and they approved. For uses of this approximately $3 million. One was to transfer $1 million to the equipment and technology fund. For the purchase of furniture, technology, um cybersecurity improvements and vehicles that will maybe needed in the future. Um, there's already $250,000 in the current year budget. Um, as a transfer from the general fund to the equipment and technology fund. Um, because the general fund is really the only source of revenue for this fund. Um, secondly, the finance committee approved transferring $250,000. To the insurance fund to fund future claims. Um, there's currently $600,000. Um, budgeted to be transferred to that fund. And again, that's really the only source, the general fund is the only source of revenue for the insurance fund. Third, um, the finance committee approved allocating $1.5 million for capital projects. Um, and I've um in the resolution included that as a transfer to a new fund. Or if you prefer, could just stay in the general fund as an allocation, but that would be for um capital projects. Um, and then in the fourth um item that the finance committee approved was um. Increasing the OPEB trust payment. That's the other post-employment benefits, retiree health benefits. Um, increasing the OPEB trust payment by $263,164. That was the balance of the um, the unallocated balance. That's why it's sort of an odd number. Um, and that's in addition to $250,000. That is already budgeted and as part of the adopted budget and then as will be discussed later, also another $476,000. Um, as part of this year's budget. Um, we're waiting right now for the latest OPEB trust from the act or OPEB trust um actuarial report from the actuary. Um, and we expect to get that next week. We know that in our trust account, there's $4.2 million and we estimate that um, that means that the OPEB liability is approximately 50% funded. And that's before these additional um transfers that are being proposed. Um, so we're waiting for that report and that will be coming to you, but not today. Um. The second component of the general fund concerns the use of the ARPA funds, so that's the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, funds, the town had received um $1,166,323 last year. And expects to receive the same amount this year. Um, approximately um $41,000 of these funds have been paid to the county for assistance to homeless residents affected by the pandemic. Um, the money received last year has also been part of the ending balance in the general fund. This is separate and in addition to the, the, the reserve, the 20% reserve and the $3 million that was just discussed. Um, so the, the use of those funds and then the, the um. The funds that we expect to receive this year will total about nearly 2.3 million dollars, $2,291,148. So the finance committee also discussed the use of those funds because um these funds are restricted. They can only be used for certain um things that are outlined in the staff report. Um, the most flexible use of the funds is related to um the town being able to use the funds for government services. To the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And there's a spreadsheet which I completed which shows that the town lost revenue due to um. Uh, hotel tax and sales tax and various things. Um, so um, the sale, the um finance committee. Um, approved the use of these funds, these ARPA funds for police services. Um, because that's clearly a government service and then that in turn would, would free up that money from the budget. And um, and be allowed to be also reserved for capital projects in, in either that new fund that I, I mentioned. Um, or if it just stay in, in the general fund as part of the ending balance that reserved. Um, and then the final part of the operating, of the general fund operating budget concerns this year's budget. Um, revenue is increased by $156,000, which does include the deduction of that $800,000 in sales tax. And then I've listed within those, in the staff report, you know, various increases um to um. Uh, hotel tax, property transfer tax, um excess ERAF. Um, so those are listed in the staff report and then expenditures are also increased by $615,000. And most of that has to do with an additional $476,882 contribution to the OPEB account. And that's in addition to the $250,000 in the adopted budget and the $263,164. As part of um that unallocated balance and but this additional 476,000. Um, represents the savings that um are due to the issuance of the, of the pension obligation bonds last year. Um, the, the current year savings or there weren't any savings last year because it was just issued last year, but this is this year's savings. Um, and then other items we could um include $40,000 for tree services due to the drought and staffing changes. So the bottom line for the general fund would be. If, if this was accepted and approved by the town council, the expenditure um and allocation. Um, for all of the unallocated ending fund balance from last year. It would be for the um expenditure and allocation of the ARPA funds. Um, and then the current year budget would be decreased a net of $459,162. That includes the $800,000 sales tax deduction. Um, we had been anticipating an increase in the ending balance of 756,000. You know, this is going to further reduce it by 459,000, so it'd be nearly $300,000 um increase. Um, and so uh then we project that that will meet the 20% reserve of approximately two point, a 4.1 million dollars. Um, do you want me to stop at this point before I move on to the capital fund for questions?
Uh, yeah, why don't you, Todd, had a hand that quickly, quickly went up. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, I just, at a high level guy, I always appreciate how Daria walks through the budget. You know, this is always, this, this one's a whiteboard kind of conversation at a high level. So what I'll tell you is what's being recommended on this mid-year adjustment. This is going to be a balanced budget at the end of the year. The first issue, as she, as Daria explained, the $800,000, we, we have, you, we, you had heard a number of $3 million. We have $3 million unrestricted in the general fund carried over from previous surpluses. Well, that number at the end of the year was 3.8 million and that, that 800,000 was, we weren't really sure, understanding why we received that extra monies. And Daria smartly set that aside. And the, and then now this is a timing issue, right? The fiscal year ended, so if the fiscal year didn't end and we had one more month. We would have just sent that money back. It was not a big deal, but we set it aside. Following month, it was, it was one of our local, you know, it's just a reporting error. So luckily we were set up just that we have that money in, in play, so. That's the good news. So we're not looking at a deficit. That's not a big problem. We're going to be fine. What's before you is, is basically a major adjustment with a balanced budget. But the, the important thing that I want to just point out is it's approximately $5.5 million. Of what we're talking about here. We had a $3 million surplus in, in general, in the general fund. We took it to the finance subcommittee to have a big picture discussion. We have two installments of the ARP monies. One was 1.1 million. Um, actually, they were both, I'm sorry, they were both 1.166 million. And then we had $476,000 from the savings arbitrage of our pension trust or our pension obligation bonds. As you recall, we did the pension obligation bonds. It's a savings arbitrage every, any, any given year up to $800,000. This year it's $476,000. So by policy. We turned to CalPERS and we said, how did, was the rate of return this year? Do we need to send money to CalPERS? CalPERS had a rate of return of 21%. Right now that CalPERS fund is super funded at a. Right now, that CalPERS fund is super funded at a hundred, one hundred, one hundred and three percent or two point two five million dollars overfunded at a six point eight percent discount rate. Good news this year. We'll see how next year goes. The next question then goes via policy through the finance subcommittee. How is the, how is our OPEB trust, our retiree health trust? Currently has four, over four million dollars, like Daria said. Our recommendation was to add to the two hundred and fifty thousand contribution we already have in play. Let's move that four seventy-six thousand dollar art savings arbitrage per policy into that fund. If you agree to that, it'll take us, we'll be approaching five million dollars at the end of this fiscal year, which will put us at a fifty-six percent funding rate within the OPEB account. We're, we have three million to go. This is an account that we have to fund over sixty years plus, and we're in a good place right now. So that's, you know, the finance subcommittee was really excited about that. This one, I just want to point out, was really important to them. They're like, let's, we look like we have a handle on the pension side. Let's go attack this OPEB side. And so this is a big one there. On the American Rescue Act monies, I really want to point out to the, to the council, you know, this isn't a gift, you know, we lost multi-millions of dollars over, over multiple months. Going into COVID, one of the things that staff worked on, and it was at the discretion of this council and previous councils, was if you're going to do the town hall project, we want you to borrow the least amount of money possible. We want you to use the general fund monies. And so that was the intent going into COVID. Well, we lost over four million dollars in COVID. And so coming back out of it, this is where now you start to see the staff coming back to you of saying, when you think about the town hall project, we borrowed seven point seven million at a two percent interest rate. We need to set aside general fund monies to close that additional gap to get us to thirteen, thirteen, five million that we talked about at the previous meeting. Part of that's from the sales tax measure. Part of this is from this discussion before you now. So when we talked about the American Rescue Act monies, you know, when you get audited by the federal government, I like it to be as clean as possible, because it's never in real time. It's down the road, right? It's going to be multiple years from now. And so we looked at the spreadsheet that Daria mentioned to show the loss, that multi-million dollar loss. We've done it. We can show that loss. So now the second decision point is that monies can be used for governmental services. So staff in the finance committee had a really robust conversation of what is the greatest good to our community? And what's the safest way where we don't get audited by the federal government and give back monies? Well, it can be used for governmental services. So as a government, we're responsible for public safety and governance and roads. And so we're like, let's put it towards public safety, right? So right now, public safety is, you know, I, I, I think it's forty, fifty percent of our, our operating budget. We pay, maybe it's a little bit less. It's, we pay approximately eight point eight million annually to public safety. So we're recommending that we set aside the two million, two point three million dollars in ARP funds and pave directly to public safety this coming fiscal year. And then that opens about the same amount within the general fund. And so we're asking that we move that monies into a capital improvement fund, which right now is being designated at about three point eight million, three point seven million to the town hall project. So it's not, it's not restricted, but we're, by summary of the statement and what we're doing for this account, that's what the use is going to go for. We're going to put seven point seven to town hall in financing. We have three point seven, three point eight set aside in this capital improvement fund if you approve it. And then the remaining two to three million will be from the sales tax measure. If we're able to hit those marks, we don't impact the capital improvement budget at all on the projects that we promised. We're within our budget, and we limit, you know, financing from that aspect. If at the end of the project, we're below budget, that monies then comes into play. Our recommendation is move that into the capital improvement budget. We're really focused on, on cost of one, right? On, on some, working with multiple agencies to add lighting to underground sidewalks, streets, and do that project quickly. So that's some of the background conversation that we had with the finance committee. And and really, I had a different recommend, staff had a different recommendation for them to consider. I wanted to actually highlight, set aside money in the contingency fund, set aside money specifically for the town hall project. But without having the bid in play, we won't have that till the first week of April. And it was a good conversation. The finance committee actually said, hey, you know, you, staff, you need to think about doing it this way. Put it into a fund, earmark it, summarize, make it transparent for everyone to see. And at a later date, you know, when you, when you decide on that bid process, we're coming back to council, and we're going to have the financing, the three pots of money. Finance, general fund, sales tax measure. This is how much money we have, council. We can't go one dollar over. What say you? And so they felt really comfortable with that recommendation. And so with that, I just want to stop there and just point out balanced budget. This really hits, hits the mark for us. It allows us a lot of flexibility. We still are not locking the council in to any decisions on some of these pots of money, because again, it's set up for future discussion. The other thing it does is it fully funds our reserve funds, which is great. Our pension trust and our OPEB trust are in really good, healthy shape. And it also funds our insurance fund. Right now, we're part of the Bay Cities Risk Pool, so any civil lawsuit, any litigation that we sustain, knock on wood, we've lived a blessed life in recent years. But if we were in litigation, we're responsible for the first hundred thousand dollars spent on any lawsuit. That's our retention limit. So an actuary looks at a town our size and says, a perfectly insured insurance fund is for, is three hundred thousand dollars in civil lawsuit hits at any one time, right? We can sustain three full shots of our retention limit in a lawsuit. And then also setting aside money to approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a full hit on a bad workers' comp claim. So right now, we have about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the insurance fund. This recommendation of moving the additional quarter million into it fully funds our insurance fund per the actuary. And so we're, we're really in a healthy position right now. Again, we have no pending litigation, but we, we are working on a couple of claims at a lower level. And so with that, I'll, I'll just stop there. Daria, I don't, does the council have any questions on the capital improvement side? Again, Daria worked really closely with RJ Supo, our, our public works director. And, you know, all of our, we have full funding for all capital improvement projects that we promised the community within the budget and the capital improvement plan. We're moving some things around, up or down, but those are all on track from a funding standpoint. But again, as we always do at the mid-year time, we'll move, we'll use the restricted funds first before we hit our sales tax measure funds for, for infrastructure, right? We want to use the grants first and some other things. And so there's always, money gets moved around in a positive way to protect, you know, our sales tax measure fund until we have to spend it. But Daria is available to answer, you know, any of those questions if you have them.
Are there, sorry, any questions from town council members? So Todd, if I, I'm sorry, if I have this correct, the three point seven million goes into a new fund for capital improvement projects. We see where, when we get the bid from the town hall project, we see where that pans out. And if there's potentially any excess money that we may not need from that fund, then that would go towards other capital projects. Meanwhile, other capital projects are already funded, in a kind of, in a nutshell.
One hundred percent accurate. And if that bid, let's just say, were to come over twenty percent, multi-millions of dollars over what we anticipate, then we're really positioned publicly to have a conversation with council to say, here's our max, here's what we have in money. What do you want to do? You know, downsize the project or make another decision. So it really positions us, people can follow the money really easily at this point by doing it this way.
Okay, and we should know that sometime in April, correct? Okay, and then the other question is, I know nothing's a hundred percent guaranteed, especially when you're dealing with the federal government. But it sounds like with the, I want to say, ARPA money, that you guys have pretty much nailed down, if the federal government came in three years or two years from now, because I know they work slowly, and said, okay, we're going to audit you to make sure the purpose of those funds were actually used for what they were supposed to be used for, and it wasn't for something else.
Yes, we're in the strongest position for any audit. This puts us in the best position. And again, we still have funds available to us. Should we, you know, we spent a lot of time too focusing on, are there groups that we can help? And it's just, there's been so much subsidy by the federal and state governments that we really couldn't wrap our heads around a good use of that. But we, we still have money moving forward. Again, as we get into the equity conversation, in the six figures that we can set aside to problem solve equity stuff as we go forward. So, you know, we're not losing that opportunity, and I just want to make that clear too, when you think about some of the Rescue Act monies.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions, town council members? No, Daria, did you have more you wanted to hit up on?
Um, no, the capital budget, as Todd said, was listed, you know, in the staff report. I'm available to answer questions, and then the other funds, the insurance fund, the equipment and technology fund, and then the recreation fund. The changes are, are listed in the staff report. Any questions about them?
All right, thanks. If there's no other questions from town council members, I will go ahead and open up for public comment. If somebody from public wishes to speak on the revised budget, please raise your hand. And in the meantime, Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Thank you, Merkisissa. No, we did not receive any emails, public comments on this item, and I am not currently seeing any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Has, we don't have any raised hands, and there's no public comment versus email. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to town council for discussion and a possible motion. Leela, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thanks, Fred. Thanks, Daria and Todd, and the finance committee for all the work they put into this. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my stand here. This all makes sense to me. I'm, you know, it's a bummer we had to give that eight hundred thousand back, but we knew that, it sounds like we kind of knew something was going on there, and I appreciate you kind of holding it to the side until we figured out what, what that issue was. I think it's great that we can add these funds to, some of this, to a capital fund to help cover the town hall costs. And I think we're in a really good position in terms of our reserves and the additional fundings for the OPEB trust. So thank you. I would support this.
Okay, thanks. Is there any other members, town council, which is to speak? Bob?
I'll just move to approve. I agree.
Okay, is there a second? Eli seconds it. If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Yes, and thanks to you, Todd, and to Daria, and also the, the finance committee. I sit on that committee, and Todd was right. It was a extremely robust conversation. Pushback from them to staff, it was a great conversation. So kudos to all. And with that, we'll move to sixty, which is consideration, possible approval of an inter-agency agreement between the town of Cordermadera and the town of Fairfax for analyst services. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What I am asking is that you authorize me to execute an inter-agency agreement with the town of Fairfax. There's still a little bit of probably work to be done. The town attorney's office has reviewed this and gave their recommendations, but it's something that Amy and I will take another look at before we sign it, just from a CalPERS perspective, because there's always things on the forefront that we want to, we want to make sure we don't, you know, agree to something and get in trouble later with, with CalPERS. But big picture, this is a work plan item, you know, we don't share services just to share services. But when there's opportunities to do things more efficiently at a cost savings measure and at the benefit to, to enhance the expertise of your staff, it's something we always want to consider. I think this is one of those. And so, you know, these shared services agreements always start, you know, in really unusual ways. This one, you know, your town manager has a relationship with the town, the interim town manager in Fairfax. He worked over ten years in the city of Sausalito. When the, he retired recently and the Fairfax position, town manager spot opened up. He's been filling in in the past few months, helping them recruit a new town manager. And so they've selected one, the new town manager is expected to be on board in April. And so during that time, you know, he, Adam was in a really bad place as a town manager. They had a lot of open positions at the department head level. They had no administrative support. And so he reached out to some of his cohorts, and it was really a mutual aid request. I need help, like not, hey, can we form an agreement and work through it? He's like, I need help like yesterday. I can't run the government. And so I, we jumped in, and we had a talk amongst Rebecca and Lorraine and myself. We felt we were positioned to help them. Lorraine was excited to get some experience and, you know, jump in and just help. And so we did that. There was no charge to the, to the town of Fairfax during this period. And for, you know, really six to eight weeks, she provided fifty percent of her time support over there to really help them move their government. At the end of December, we stopped that shared services kind of arrangement and really brought Lorraine back and just moved forward, really not trying to form any agreement. We were just trying to help one of our cohorts in, in the county. It was so successful, Lorraine left such an impression of her skill set and really the work that she was able to do. We were approached in, in December, January to enter the shared services agreement before you. And so a lot of discussions have gone on. Really, in their perfect world, Fairfax, they would like to have fifty percent share of an admin analyst, and they would like it to be Lorraine, but really an administrative analyst. Well, we're not positioned to give one of our best employees to someone for fifty percent of the time. She has a full-time job here. But what we have told them, and, and one of the examples is, you know, there's an equity report that, that's already been written and a lot of analysis. I, just looking at it, we'll probably change about twenty percent of it plus with our working group before we come to the council. But a lot of that work has already been done. And so I would like to wait for the new manager to get on board and make sure she's on board with what we're thinking. But my thought is, there's probably four to five projects this next year where we have joint work plan kind of projects that are the same. They're really the same, and some of it's by government code that we have to just approve it, so it's the same one hundred percent. A lot of it will be very similar, seventy to eighty percent between most agencies, and then it'll be philosophy, right? The council will put your own philosophy on it. But with that, I prom, I, I promise them, if, if the council does approve this, that I would be committed and Lorraine is interested on doing, identifying those three to five projects and having her start the work first in Fairfax. And so what we would do is we would accomplish five major work plan projects and get paid approximately twenty to thirty thousand dollars for that work. And so, and at the same time, develop Lorraine, build a relationship with our friends in Fairfax. They're also doing a shared services agreement for climate action. Member, a hire for between the two organizations, we're looking at the same thing. There's going to be some opportunities to provide admin support, to do things in other departments within our towns. And it really then brings us back to Larkspur. And so there's, you know, this thing always starts somewhere, doesn't necessarily excite you, but this opens a lot of windows operationally for us to think out loud. Most importantly, I will not, and I've talked to Lorraine and Rebecca about this, we're on the same page. We are not going to send someone to another jurisdiction at the expense of, of, you know, our operation. So that's important. So that's why I want to really wait for this new manager to get on board and, and spend some time with her. But I'm excited about what I hear. I think this is a great opportunity for us, more so for Lorraine. You know, Lorraine's big picture, you know, view, you know, the world when she grows up professionally, she wants to be a city manager, which is pretty cool. Like, you know, I don't know how many of us at her age knew we wanted that. She's really just a rising star in our, our organization. And so like all of them, Tracy was one of the other admin analysts that we, you know, elevated her in planning, because she just, just really did well. Both of our analysts are just, sky's the limit. So we want to challenge them and keep them interested. We want to keep them in Cordermadera. This allows us to do it, and you know, and for me, the admin analyst position, I think ultimately, we're probably going to lose both of them, and they're going to get hired and get department head positions. If I can keep them for five years and train them up, and, you know, we get all that expertise and all that good work from them, I think we're going to be a better town for it, and so will they. So anyway, that's the background of what the thought is behind this, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't, this is not a cost neutral. We will, you know, this fiscal year, probably bring in about twenty thousand dollars and some of that shared work that we're going to focus on over the next six months. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Todd? I just want to touch upon Todd. Our, the services at Cordermadera, it's not decreased at all, right? The services still continue, even though she's dedicating Esme on time to Fairfax, correct? I think you're on mute.
Our services have not deteriorated. Yes, we're still getting all the work done. Is that your ask, Mr. Mayor? We have, yes, yes.
Okay, are there any other questions, town council members? Okay, with that, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this topic, please raise your hand. And in the meantime, Rebecca, do we have any emails that came in?
We did not receive any emails, public comments on this item, and I am not currently seeing any raised hands.
Okay, given that, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I'm all for this, as long as we're sure we don't lose Lorraine.
They can't afford her.
That's the big one. Absolutely. And if that's the case, I'm all for it.
Understood.
Do I need to make a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, move to approve.
Okay, Leela seconds it. Is there any further discussion? With that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Hi.
Merkisissa?
Yes, and Todd, it looks like you're a great mentor. If other towns are looking at our staff, it just shows that, you know, again, you're a great mentor in that, in that. It just shows that, you know, again, you're a great mentor in that in that capacity. So and all the directors also. So thanks.
And that's, that's what I was going to say. Rebecca and the directors too. We, yeah, good team.
But I think I give you credit also because we're not taking adversary role with other towns in Marin or even across the Bay Area. It's more like, how can we help our neighboring cities? I think that is a great approach to take also. So kudos.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and move into council reports, town manager report.
Thank you, members of the council. I just, I just, I've just a few high level. So again, we completed our move. So we've caught our breath. We're just putting things away, taking them out of boxes. Again, as soon as we can have an open house, we're going to do that. One of the other things that this was Rebecca's idea and I mentioned it before, but I think we're going to, one of our thing, one of the things we really want to focus on as soon as we can be outdoors. We want the weather to be a little nicer. We want to do a couple of events of just booths of all of our volunteer organizations, all of our organizations. Where you can put faces to the names. It's kind of like Rush Week, right? Here's what we're doing. We have food and drink and we're out there seeing each other. And really building that, those groups, group, build them back up. And so I think we're really excited about that. That was Rebecca's idea. And so that's going to be one of the things. We also focus with Ashley and her team. We're installing the solar battery backups at the Public Works Maintenance Yard. So that should be complete in the next ten days. We're meeting with PG&E. Staff is going to meet with PG&E leadership. Our undergrounding study is just about done. We're also completing. The cost to underground the entire town, specific parts of town. And so we'll, we'll have a pretty robust analysis there as well. And we're starting to really identify. Behind closed doors with PG&E, some of our ass, some of our areas that jump out as at us from a safety standpoint of undergrounding. And trying to get one of those pilot programs that we talked about upfront within the state. And so more to come there. And then we'll start to have some public meetings of the draft report with council and kind of get your take in direction. I'll probably ask for two members of the council to join me in some of those talks with the, with the, with PG&E because this is gonna, we're going to politically, you know. Do a full court press to the CPUC and PG&E. But I've, we're, we're getting some good movement there and I'm excited for what I'm hearing. So more to come there. But that is moving forward. Bob Brown, our consultant that we've talked about on the planning side. He's moving forward to items really quickly. The first is the Climate Action Committee. We're going to come back. He is going to work closely. He's under contract now. So we're going to tie him up with our Climate Action Working Group and Councilmember Beckman and myself. And we're going to start to do the work that we outlined for you a couple of council meetings ago. And he's also working on short-term rentals. Right now, he's doing an analysis within the Bay Area. Similar size, you know, issues, sized towns, kind of what maybe our options are to consider. And so our thought is, once we have that initial report. We'll probably take an informational report to council to get some of your feedback. And then ultimately, if that's the way we want to go, we'll, we'll move that to be a planning commission. For conversations and discussion. The infrastructure bill just came out. We just got a lot of information on. How that's going to roll out the multi billions of dollars for that. And so there's a number of grants that are opening, starting as early as February. So our staff is, we're starting, we're going to assign multiple people to that. And we're going to start, you know, having discussions within, you know, BPAC and. Our other commissions and boards and the council of, here's what we think should be our priorities. What say you? And we're going to go attack those grants at a full court press. They've also asked for feedback of staff in January on electric charging infrastructure. And what would communities really, what would benefit communities? What are we looking for? And so we're also engaged in that conversation to provide some of that information. We have a, at our up, at our upcoming meeting, at this next council meeting, the Corder Maderaian project is moving forward to you for review and ultimately approval. Before that meeting, we're going to meet with the Planning Commission and Council and have a discussion on the housing element. There's some things that we have to do there. And if we have time, we also have time for one more kind of robust kind of conversation. And my recommendation, and I'll check in with all of you on this after the meeting to make sure we hit it, but might be the, the charging station infrastructure. What should our policy be? A lot of these go through the Planning Commission first. And we just want to make sure that both the council and Planning Commission are on the same page. And I think that might be a good topic for you to discuss. But I'll check in with you to make sure. At your last MCCMC meeting, they formed another commit, an additional committee. It was the County and City Services Discussion. It's kind of a big one. It's one that the managers have had for a long time. And it's lately, it's been, you know, we call them the one offs, you know, where you come in and you say, hey, we want to do, it's a good program. It could be the mobile showers. It could be anything. These are, you know, the vouchers. They want to hire additional personnel to help on the homeless side. I think the internal discussion though has always been from the Health and Human Services side of, hey, what are the state and federal mandates of Health and Human Services? Or for the county? And, and what monies do you county receive from all the cities and towns? And what services do the towns and cities receive back? You know, following the money to have like an open discussion of. What do you provide in this aspect? And I'm just giving the recent on the homeless discussion, right? Because we have four or five. Budget asks over the last eighteen months, who's ultimately responsible? And what is that, that mandated minimum that you provide as a county? And, and understanding it. And then when we have additional ask, if you want anything over that line, then you're going to have to pay for it, cities and towns, right? On an ask. And I think we're all okay with the ask. We just want a process that makes sense, following the money, understanding the mandates. The county has made decisions differently than how we operate, right? Because we come in and we go, hey, we have a department. Here's what we're mandated to provide. Now, here's the, here's how we're going to do. Here's the services. Here's how we're going to provide it. And here's how much it costs. Anything over that? It costs more. And what are we going to do? And so we're trying to have that discussion. We're going to use Health and Human Services as kind of the baseline. To just focus on one thing, since it's, you know, since we're all familiar with some of these discussions recently. And then, and then. Understand the budget, educate ourselves and start to have a discussion amongst those council members that are on it. And the managers that'll be on it. And so I'm going to chair it from the manager perspective. And I understand, I mean, Councilmember Beckman and Mayor Casissa, you're also on this committee. So we'll definitely, we should get together and kind of talk out also, you know, what you like to see from this committee. But that's, that's really kind of the background. From the manager's perspective in talking to our council members and how it came about at your committee meeting. So I'm excited about that. I think it's going to be a good one. I, I, we don't want it to be adversarial in any way. I think, you know, for me, I, like I talked to the county administrator, I was like, you know, you. You come and you have this ask and it's a great program and we want to do it. But then you end up getting talked at by eleven other managers and that can't feel good. So let's build a, let's build a process where we're on the same page, we're educated and we can understand it. Or as new managers and council members come in into our seats. It's easy to, we have an education and orientation, you know, kind of plan in place too, so we can get up to speed quickly. And so. It, I know there were some concerns that it was, it was crossing over into the homeless committee and it really isn't. It's two different things. We're kind of following money. Mandates and, and, and building it into decision-making if we can. But it won't be easy, that's for sure. And the last one is the cybersecurity assessment. As I told you before, it's completed. We're hiring, we're going to bring Marin IT in. Marin IT provides IT infrastructure services for most of the agencies in Marin County. They also provide those services for Central Marine Police Authority. And so we're going to start to attack that cybersecurity assessment. And I'll give you, I'm going to work with, again, I want to be careful because it lists our vulnerabilities, but I want you to know what we're doing. And so I'm going to work with Amy on how I get that information to you. In a, in a way, because you, I want you to know what we're doing. Part of that, about a quarter billion dollars. Of that million dollars that we put into the equipment replacement fund tonight, a large portion of that is, is for the infrastructure of our cybersecurity. So we're going to really attack it. And the direction that we give Marin IT is to, I think there's fifty-six areas of vulnerability. We're going to solve all fifty-six. That's our goal. So more to come on that as well. And I'll stop there. Oh, one last thing. I just, one thing just from this discussion tonight, I just want you all to know that's something that jumps out at me. I know we give you a look ahead. Of, of what's coming, you know, in the next meeting and Councilmember Mongan and I had a conversation earlier today. You know, I need to do a better job of, because I know it's important to each of you. I pay attention and we, we talk a lot. And when I know there's, there's items that are important to you, you know, thirty days out, I'm going to do a better job of having discussions with you and making sure. You know, we're meeting the mark. So you're not ever surprised, you know, three days before a meeting on a report. And I also want you to know that it's never the intent of staff. You know, when you do have something, if you're not comfortable with it, it's okay. Like, we don't have to approve something as is. You know, and I just, but I, I'm going to make a better, better effort at that. And I just want you to know that.
Thanks, Todd. And any questions for Todd? Okay, we'll move to town council reports. Eli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, last week had an MCCMC Legislative Committee meeting. Had a Climate Action Committee Working Group. Todd touched on that the, the new staff person is getting ready to join. So that is great. Last week, we had a League of Cities North Bay Division meeting. That was basically a presentation on likely ballot propositions for this year. The good news to come out of that was that. Looks like the, the land use one that I told you about has stalled. The one that was basically going to overturn all, you know, all state land use policy was just going to be, just like. After we've invested all this time and money trying to align with state law, it would just basically throw all that out the window. So it would have been a huge wrench in the works. That looks like it's not moving forward now, but the sales tax one that I told you about is still a huge threat that is moving forward. That's the one that if it passes. Would wipe out basically all local sales taxes. We would lose our sales tax and we'd have to pass it again by, I'm pretty sure, a seventy-five percent margin. So it, it's just insane. It would be a disaster for, for local agencies up and down the state. And then the last thing, I think most of you are probably there, but MCCMC Committee last week, really good presentation on cybersecurity. So I'm really glad to hear. Todd, that that's moving forward. And Todd already mentioned the, the new county funding and services committee. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes. First off, we had a Marin Wild for Protection Association meeting. A couple of key points from that. We have, we're moving ahead. We're doing a lot of stuff. We have completed SEQA analysis on sixteen different projects now. And so far, we have cleared two hundred and eighty miles of roadway. Evacuation routes and trim back trees. We have cleared four hundred and seventy-nine acres of shaded fuel breaks. And we have done twelve miles of fire road maintenance. So we're starting to really make progress. It's really working. There's going to be a lot more, believe me. Had a BPAC meeting to talk about, you know, we finished that sidewalk on Paradise Drive. Then we were talking about the Sea Wolves to Robin Drive portion now, which is the next portion, about doing it on the north side or on the south side. After a long discussion, a lot of public input, the decision was to move forward by. Doing an upgrading the bike path on the south side of Paradise as opposed to rebuilding it on the north side because. It will take years and a lot of money to really do it on the north side because there's all kinds of issues on that. We also talked about Marin Country Day School, the parking queue issue, which has gone on over there. They were talking about us, but I suggest we bump that up to council. So that'll be coming to us eventually. And also that I had a homeless committee meeting. Our homeless fund, which is done from all the towns, is up for renewal. It ran for three years. It was funded last year by the Marine Community Foundation. So we're going to be talking more about that. But it goes to fund mobile showers. Which have been incredibly successful. The last year alone, the mobile showers have resulted in seventeen people getting into the program and getting into permanent housing. So it is working and we're going to be talking to you about potentially extending it. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Bob. Charles?
Yeah, so I also attended the MCCMC and the, the NorCal Division and also a coffee talk. I think Eli mentioned most of those, but I also did the Transportation Authority Marin Board Meeting. And in that, they talked about new funding and grants that come out in the infrastructure bill. And Tam has elected to move forward our, our grant application that was denied last year. It ranked very high in the list and we, we lost out to a really great project, but now that one's up in the queue. And so they're going to, we're going to fine tune it and resubmit it. So that'll be really good. That's for Casa Buena, I believe. Some extra funding for that. And then, and then also there's three new grant opportunities. So they also suggested to local municipalities that if there are kind of projects that are valid. And can score high that we should submit. So I communicated that to RJ and Todd. And I think they're going to be looking at some of that. And then we definitely talked about. The legislative support in that. And the, in general, I think. You know, we're on a good track as far as moving forward with. All the projects and, and the state support for them. So. Look forward to this next year. And, and pretty soon, I think we're going to do a tour of the, the bike path over. Over, over Corder Madera Creek, there by the ferry terminal that they've been working on, the decks being poured. And so soon it'll be walkable and hopefully open by this early summer, which would be awesome.
Thanks, Charles. We walk over there a lot and they're, they're making a lot of progress on that. It's looking really nice, like really nice. Leela?
Thanks, Fred. I just have a couple. We had a Home Key or Casa Buena Steering Committee meeting. Where we kind of talked about the community forum that we had had and how to address some of the issues that were brought up in public comment at that meeting. And then I had an MCCMC Climate Committee meeting. We talked about a number of different things, but one of the interesting items was talking about the. Leaf blower, gas leaf blower bans and how to kind of work together to standardize that across Marin. You know, realizing that a lot of landscapers that work in Marin don't just work in one jurisdiction so that it would make sense for there to be a consistent rule on that. And one interesting thing that I learned about that, that I think can make us all feel good about our ban that we already have on the books that some jurisdictions don't. Is that not only is there, you know, a climate impact there from the emissions that would come from a gas leaf blower, but it's also really bad health-wise for the workers. For the landscapers to be that close to a leaf blower and inhaling the fumes. So that was something that I was embarrassed, I hadn't really thought about. But another reason that we should feel good about our ban.
Thank you. And for me, I also attended the Project Home TK Working Group. Also attended the Finance Committee meeting, which I think we see the results of that, the recommendations that came out during the budget revisions. And also age-friendly Corder Madera. And then I think Eli mentioned this, but him and myself will be sitting on the city slash county services subcommittee. And one thing that is, it's my understanding, that committee is only supposed to run, I think, six to twelve months. So it's not a long-term committee. It's more of a short term to look at zero in on the items that Todd had previously mentioned. And let me go ahead. There's nothing else. Let me go ahead and open up for public comment really quick. Rebecca, any emails come in?
Mr. Mayor, just not, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Rebecca, I cut you off.
Oh, I was just saying there were no email public comments received and I'm not seeing any raised hands.
This is one that stresses me out. So Councilmember Beckman brought it up. So that's sales tax legislation or that. That bill that's trying to go through and for Amy too. I just, I remember when we brought our measure forward, there was some discussion about some of the, there was similar. Things trying to be passed. And at the time, we wanted to be above that seventy-six percent threshold, which we were. Our sales tax measure got approved at seventy-six point nine eight. And I'm just, my, one of my questions or maybe offline would be. If it did pass, you know, because then that says it has to go back to the voters and pass, I think, over seventy-six percent. If we're over that threshold. Would we still be, do you know if there's been any discussion if we would still be subject to that bill?
All sales taxes get wiped out. All sales taxes, all local sales taxes. Yeah.
I thought it was three unless they had happened within a certain, within the last couple of years, two or three years. I thought there was a, there was a caveat that they were trying to talk.
Oh, there may be that caveat, but I don't think anything that, that saves us.
All right. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay.
Oh, that's okay. No problem. I've learned some, on some of these laws, I think it's great that we get an early perspective, but you almost have to wait till you actually see. How they pan out. Because Eli, you're probably more aware of this, working with the League of, on all that stuff, is that, you know, it starts at A and by the time you get to C. It's a little number of things have changed. So, but yeah, I'm glad that we're trying to get ahead of the curve.
Eli, do you remember what the NorCal, what, what the city's position was on that one? Are they going to, they also discussed whether they were going to work against it or not?
Yeah, I think they're going to fight like heck against that one.
Okay, thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and see, no hands raised. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Next item is a draft agenda. As Todd mentioned, on February fifteenth, we are looking at the Residence Inn project. Which will probably take up with the bulk of our time. And we're also looking at doing a joint session with the Planning Commission, two topics. One will be housing element. And then Todd will get back to everybody about if we want the next topic to be EV charging stations. I'll talk to Adam and Todd offline because I really want to make sure that we get those two topics discussed. And that we have enough time to talk about both of them. And if there's no other further business, I will go ahead and adjourn our town council meeting. We do have an SD two meeting, which we'll go ahead and work into that. And with that. Which we'll go ahead and work into that. And with that, I will go ahead and call the Sanitary District Two meeting to order. Uh, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Board Member Beckman?
Here.
Board Member Mongan?
Here.
Board Member Avasia?
Here.
Board Vice President Lee?
Present.
And Board President Casissa.
Here, and this time I'll go ahead and open the money up or the meeting up for, open for public comment. Is there anyone from public wishing to speak uh under public comment for Sanitary District Two meeting? And Rebecca, did you get any emails in?
We did not receive any email public comments for the sanitary district and I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment. We have no presentations tonight. Uh, go ahead and go to the consent calendar. These are items that have been previously discussed. They don't require further discussion. Uh, any member of the district board staff or public can have an item pulled for further discussion. With that, is there anybody from uh the district board staff or the public that wishes to have a item pulled and further discussed? I don't see any hands raised in the participants list and attendees, no members, board members list. So with that, I will go ahead and close that portion out and bring it back to the board for a possible motion to prove the consent calendar. Bob?
Move four A through four C.
Okay, is there a second? Eli seconds it. Uh, with that, is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Sorry, I'm down to eight percent on my iPad, so it's not responding very quickly. Yes.
Board Member Avasia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Beck, uh, Casissa.
Uh, yes.
On the meeting, I have to do it.
That's okay. Uh, we have no public hearings. We have only one business item, uh, which is the budget for the sanitary district. These are revisions to the budget. I'll turn it back over to Daria and then potentially Todd.
Thank you. Um, this budget revision, which is in your package, um, consists of additional expenditures of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In capital, um, capital project expenditures, about um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is carried over from the prior year for the. Um, twenty twenty sewer rehabilitation um project, which just crossed years, some of the expenditures. And um, there's a hundred thousand dollars for the sewer system master plan update. Um, of that hundred thousand dollars, about eighty eight thousand dollars is also carried over from last year. Um, and then um, twenty five thousand dollars for the rich and industrial sewer improvement project and twenty, and seventy five thousand dollars for the Park Madera Center. Sewer lateral. Um, and so as a result of this, uh, the, at the end of the fiscal year, it's estimated that there'll be about four point five million dollars. Um, available in this, in this uh sanitary district in addition to two point five million dollar reserve.
Okay, Todd, did you want to add anything?
No updates.
Okay, thanks. Uh, does any, any board member have any questions on the revised budget? Now, with that, I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on the revised budget for the sanitary district? And Rebecca, did we get any emails in?
No, we did not receive any email to public comments on this item and I am not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for a discussion and possible motion. Eli?
Great work, Daria, and I'll move the budget revision, um, which I believe is a motion to adopt. A resolution, Resolution Number Three, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Board Member Avasia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Casissa.
Yes. And with that, uh, we have an agenda for our next board meeting. If anybody wishes to add any items, please let myself or Rebecca or Todd know. And if there's no discussion on that, we are adjourned if there's no further business. We're adjourned. Okay, thanks, everybody. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Bye.